The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with and that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least forty-eight hours in advance. On March eighteenth, notice was mailed to the Coria Post in the Aldea. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board located by the reception desk at the central office and all school building bulletin boards within the district.
Ms. Regina, roll call.
Good evening, I'm gonna call, do roll call. Ms. Teresa Atwood.
Yes.
Mr. Jose Brito Bueno. Ms. Dorothy Burley.
Present.
Mr. Joshua Cole. Ms. Taisha Minir. Minister Wasim Muhammad.
Present.
Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton.
Here.
Mrs. Martha Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Catherine Blackshear.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can we place to the flag?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Motion for close session. Motion to go into close. The Board will now go into close session to discuss matters of personnel, safety and security, privacy, real estate investigations, attorney-client privileges. At this time, I call for a motion to go into close.
Motion to go into close.
Is there a second? Motion to go into close was made by Mrs. Wilson and Ms. Atwood. All in favor going into close say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. We are now in close, returning at six-ten. Come out of close.
Motion to come out of close.
Motion to come out of close was made by Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton and Mrs. Atwood. All in favor, coming out of close say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. We're out of close.
So, this was my delivery, so we're supposed to go to advertisement, how to come out of public session, out of close session at six-thirty. You can't, that's the time I have tonight, I have the time, but the topic's part of the story is six-thirty. We were supposed to be in close at six-thirty.
I'd like the superintendent to do his report.
Okay, so I'm gonna go down, like we always do, so if Board members could please go down to the first row. Same with the student Board members. Alright, good evening, everyone. I want to begin by recognizing a Camden student athlete. So this student athlete, Lanami Morton, is a junior at Camden High School. And Lanami participates in indoor track and field, and she advanced to the state championship after finishing second at the NJSIAA sectional championship in the fifty-five meter hurdles earlier in the year. And then, on February twentieth, Lanami won the NJSIAA state championship in the fifty-five meter hurdles. And so we want to honor her and recognize her for being a state champion. So let's welcome her up. So we're gonna cover a number of items. We're gonna start with the financial audit, we're gonna go through water quality, as that is clearly an important topic throughout the country, and especially here in New Jersey, give an update on Camden commitment, as we are at the quarterly mark since we iterated the last plan, Camden enrollment update, facilities reorganization, Parkside Schools, and then we'll end with our usual highlights. So, beginning with our financial audit, I'm gonna welcome up our school business administrator, Regina Robinson.
Tonight, I'm just gonna talk briefly about the financial audit that was conducted for the fourteen-fifteen year, just some highlights that came out of the audits. As part of the audit that was performed by Bowman and Company, there was no significant audit findings that were noted as part of the audit that was conducted, that looked at the fiscal year fourteen-fifteen. One of the things that came out of that was twenty-one audit findings that the district is addressing. Coming out of that is in the following categories of payroll and accounting, benefits, fixed assets, record-keeping, I would like to say, record-keeping and internal controls, and grant spending. The grant spending ones were aligned to what was presented last month as part of the consolidated monitoring report. And other than that, those are the categories as a result of the audit that was recently conducted. The audit was reviewed by our, with our auditors, the end of January, and filed with the state at the end of January, January twenty-seventh. In addition to that, the district is now required to compile a corrective action plan based on those twenty-one findings that I am working on now to put together and will present for approval at the April Board meeting. I will turn it back over to Superintendent.
Alright, so, water quality inside of our schools. I've had a number of people reach out to me with questions and comments, and I just thought it would be appropriate to address it briefly here. I think, as many of you all know, recently in Newark, they announced that they found elevated levels in the water at thirty of their traditional public schools, and they basically, effective immediately, began distributing bottled water to those schools. I believe, on average, the way they measure the lead is parts per billion, and on average, they're somewhere between twelve to fifteen parts per billion in those thirty schools, some more, some less. The situation in Flint, obviously, has kind of triggered this issue nationally as a topic of conversation. And I just thought it was appropriate to talk about what we've been doing, and really, this is the byproduct of advocacy efforts here in Camden. And in particular, I want to recognize Roy Jones, who I don't believe is here, and Mongalisa Davis, who is here, for their impressive advocacy over the years. I went and did some research along with Brendan from our communications team, and we're reading articles from two thousand and two in the Philadelphia Inquirer when this story first broke. And because of those advocacy efforts, today what you see, bottled water at every school, the older buildings that have older pipes have a flushing system to flush out, at least once per day, the pipes, to the extent lead is starting to build up. And then the newer buildings have water filtration systems as well. So I do believe we have strong mitigating measures in place, and that is not for anything new that we have brought to bear here in Camden, as the byproduct of the leadership and advocacy efforts of many of those who preceded me and preceded this administration. So I, again, just want to recognize Mr. Jones and Mr. Davis, and the many others who, beginning in the early two thousands, helped put us in the great position that we are in today. So thank you all. Alright, so, we are at the three-month point since we last updated everyone on the Camden commitment, and so I'll just go through promise by promise and give you some of the more relevant updates. So on safe students, safe schools, something that I'm really proud of, and frankly, this took a little bit longer than it should have, but nonetheless, we are at a place where we can say that badges, new ID badges, have been distributed to all district employees for access into buildings. And so they are differentiated to provide specific staff with swipe access to buildings, so Camden High staffer will have access to Camden High School, but a central office staffer may have access to both Camden High, Woodrow, and areas of the admin building, et cetera. We recently launched another school as part of our positive behavioral incentive program called PIBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports. And that, so that sixth school is Yorkshire School, we're proud to move forward with that partnership at Yorkshire. Recently, we partnered with some community leaders, Stan White and Ranja Dickerson, for an anti-violence program called Power and Praise, as part of that first promise and our partnership efforts to get out inside of our schools. With twenty-first century school buildings and technology inside of our schools, we recently upgraded the district email server to increase employee access to school and district communications. And I think a lot of you all heard, in the last Board meeting, we're moving forward with the renovation of the old Whittier Building in partnership with KIP. And in addition to that, I'm gonna give a fuller update on this last item, but that we are moving Med East to what is clearly a more suitable and higher-quality facility than where they currently are in the RIG Center, and again, I will provide a more full update on that in a moment. Promise three, with excellent schools, this is obviously the most expansive of the three promises, given this is the core function of the district. We've introduced a new guided reading program in arcade-eight schools with related video series in production. We are still actively collaborating with our student Board members to update our student grading policy. We have had some pretty vigorous debates with them to make sure that our grading policies are equitable. This was actually first brought to us by our student Board member, Creative Arts Morgan Village, Josh Sims, who pointed out that our grading policy, when you compare it to Cherry Hill and some other nearby districts, is not equitable. And so we are still working with them to finalize it, and we will institute changes that will provide greater equity with great input from our student Board members. We are working to train our educators on best practices for supporting special ed students in the least restrictive environments. We've launched a pilot focused on improving co-teaching in special education classrooms. And lastly, training guidance counselors on Naviance. So Naviance is a new online resource that basically helps us better track and better support our high school students in college and career planning. I've heard nothing but great feedback from our guidance counselors on Naviance, and so pleased to be able to move forward there. Promise four, parent engagement. I think everyone here knows about Camden enrollment, so we closed the application process. I'll give you another, I'll give you a fuller update in a moment, with twenty-five-hundred unique applicants. We trained all of our community school coordinators on gang awareness and human trafficking. And we recently just kicked off a health awareness campaign, Let's Move Together, to promote physical activity to each of our district school communities. And then lastly, with central office, we submitted our balanced budget to the state, and later this evening, we're gonna talk to you about that balanced budget. We have coordinated a diversity training for approximately a third of our district central office staff, which includes all of senior leadership. This is part of our deliberate efforts to be far more inclusive in what we are doing with a huge focus on diversity. We rolled out a campaign in the central office and schools to implement a single-stream recycling program. So we have a green team now in the central office with volunteers from across the building to promote single-stream recycling. So those were some of the newer initiatives. I didn't touch on many of the older initiatives that I think a lot of you all are already familiar with, but I just wanted to give you those updates. So as mentioned, with Camden enrollment, we closed the application window, the main application window. We received two thousand five hundred and twenty-one applicants. So in mid-April, middle of April, that's when those applicants will receive their placements. We opened the window back up after it closed for those that didn't actually participate in the main round, so that happened on March the seventh. And so, in late spring, after the main round applicants have been given their matches, we will give the next round of matches to those who applied in the second window. And just on an ongoing basis, as families have questions, have appeals to the placements, or just any issue that comes up, we will continue to field them, and families can go to our website, they can go to the solution center, they can certainly reach out to their community school coordinator as well. I want to quickly touch on a facilities reorganization. This is noted in the agenda for this Board item. So, the headline here is that while the district has changed considerably over the past several years, the leadership size and the structure of the facilities team has not. And so, updating the leadership structure for the sixteen-seventeen school year to meet current and future needs requires adding some positions, eliminating some others, a reorganization, in short. And so, applications for these new leadership positions will be posted online tomorrow, March the twenty-third. Encourage any qualified candidates interested in exploring the new leadership positions to apply online, and this includes individuals that are currently in the positions that are being eliminated. This is just for leadership positions in facilities and maintenance. This is not some comprehensive, "all positions are being impacted" type deal. And the priority application deadline for the new leadership positions is April the sixth, and we urge all internal candidates to apply by that time. And so should anyone need any assistance completing the online application, the Division of Talent Labor Relations has computer workstations available for use during office hours or by appointment. Alright, so before we get into the district highlights, I want to close with a different reorganization of sorts happening in Parkside Schools. So before I go through this, the big picture here is that this year, we are not announcing any school closures, we are not announcing any whole-school transformations in partnership with Renaissance Schools, in large part because we see progress across all schools in Camden. And that's encouraging, so whether that's a Renaissance School, Charter School, or traditional public school, we see signs of progress. And so, a lot of changes last year, continuing to see that progress, and letting those changes settle heading into this year is where we landed. And the only structural changes that we announced, we've already shared these out with parents and community members, and this is really the byproduct of two-plus years of dialogue with the Parkside community. So the only structural changes being the ones up on the screen in Parkside. And so, what is happening here is that, at the center of it, you could argue, because it's a three-part equation, at the center of it is Med East, and that school community advocating for, since well before I was appointed, to move out of the RIG Center. The RIG Center was never intended to house a traditional high school, it doesn't have an auditorium, a gym, et cetera, and so wanting to address that situation. And what we are doing here is we are moving Med East, starting next school year, into Hatch. Hatch, for those of you that are close to the Hatch community, I see a number of familiar faces that know Hatch very, very well. Hatch has lost considerable amount of students, so their enrollment has declined substantially, especially over the past couple of years. And our objective was to put more students into Hatch. It is a historic building, and by moving Med East into Hatch, we accomplished that objective, because right now, the building is so underutilized, the third floor isn't even being used. And so, as part of this move, Hatch would become a grade-six-to-twelve school, and their lower grades, grades-two-through-five, would move to Forest Hill, and the Forest Hill middle schoolers would move to Hatch. And that part, Forest Hills, the decision to move their middle schools over to Hatch, and the elementary school students from Hatch over to Forest Hill, is driven by a lot of feedback from the Forest Hill community over the past couple of years, where they've made two points. One is that Forest Hill was always an elementary school, it was never intended to become a K-8, we want to be a K-5. Secondly, it doesn't make sense to have same-grade levels, two schools just down the street from one another. And, you know, we see that in other neighborhoods throughout the district, but, you know, in this case, we did believe it made more sense for the K-5, for the fifth graders to have a choice to apply into the sixth grade at Hatch, and then for the eighth graders to have a choice into applying into the high school. So you create a cleaner feeder pattern for three schools that are all nearby each other. And I can tell you that, having been to both family meetings, and I see some familiar faces who were also at the family meetings, the news was very well-received by all three school communities, and especially Med East, which has been trying to get out of the RIG Center. So, you know, this, I do believe, is a win-win-win across all three school communities. The issues that are coming up, I don't think will surprise you all, particularly at Hatch. One key concern from parents is that you now have middle school and high school students coming together into one building, and that's a real issue. And so what we're going to do is, we're gonna work with the school community to have different entrances at the Hatch building, so the middle schoolers enter on one side of the building and the high schoolers on the other, and also to make sure that they're separated within the building, because I do hear that concern. The analog, the model to think about here is Creative Arts Morgan Village. So they've got a middle school there, they've got a high school there, and so we're gonna borrow from some of what we've learned at Creative Arts to bring this model now to Hatch-Med East, or Med East-Hatch. I don't think we've settled on which is gonna go first, but we're gonna preserve both school names. Okay? I imagine we may get some questions. Gary?
So, I guess my biggest concern is not so much with the changes that are taking place, but with the body. I understand there's some educators who have, they have an identity with those children in that neighborhood. So I guess my question would be, what happens if this area, that's what I'm asking, would this area be somewhat that we could utilize in the Parkside area to help this kind of block that we're going to?
So as far as the educators and the teachers, at the highest level, for the most part, those teachers would move with the students. So if you are a middle school teacher at Hatch, excuse me, at Forest Hill, to the extent you would like to remain with those students, and you note that in the staffing survey, you would move over to the Hatch building. As far as leadership goes, what we announced at the family meeting is that Principal Jenkins from Med East will definitively be moving into the new school, into the new building. Ms. Harrigan, we are still working to decide whether or not it's needed for her to stay as a second principal. So we're working with her and the school community to make a final determination there. But Mr. Jenkins will definitively be moving. Ms. Neal.
My concern is that we're mixing in the high school children and the middle school children. Now, in high school, you're an adult, some of those get to eighteen years old. And we're gonna have problems with those young girls and young men, limited to what the high school students are doing. What I'm saying is, you're making the kids go off before their times. There is a reason why traditional schools have kept those children apart for years. Now, you had a whole catastrophe over there when you went to go to Morgan Village, Med East. Believe me, I know, because my daughter was there. Okay? Primarily, what you did when you were at school, I watched a hundred and sixty parents whose children had IEPs and things like that thrown out of that school. See? So there's a certain type of children that you, what would you do this? Now, I'm asking you, if there's many children with learning disabilities in that school, what are you planning on going with, if they go into Med East? I want to know, because it seems like our special ed children are being thrown away. We have children that are unserviced in this district. Now, here lately, I put up a video in reference to any parents who have children in the district that's not getting serviced. And you know, I've been calling your office all week, some of these cases are horrible. Parents been asking for services for two and three years. It seem like, since you got here, they've been asking for services. So I want to know, A, have you had any psychiatrists or psychologists come in exactly to see what the effects of this double school is gonna do with these kids, just like the effects that they had there in Morgan Village?
So I want to address the points about just having older kids and younger kids. I mean, we hear that concern with K-8 schools as well, with younger kids being in the same building, you know, first graders in the same building as eighth graders. So we hear that concern whether it's a K-8 or a sixth-to-twelve. Within the building, we're gonna have separate entrances, so I think that will help. And I say, going into the building, we're gonna have separate entrances, and within the building, we're gonna configure it such that the younger kids are in a separate part of the building than the older kids. And so we're gonna work very, very deliberately and carefully with the families to ensure that those concerns are mitigated. And so far, the conversation's going in the right direction. To your point about special education students in Med East, so all eighth graders at Hatch will have a preference to go to Med East if they so choose to mark Med East first in their application process. And so Med East today, fifteen, hold on, let me just finish the point. Med East today has fifteen percent of their students are special ed students, so it's not that they're not serving special ed students, it's not that they won't be serving special ed students moving forward. So those, all students that want to remain with Med East through the application process, Mr. Jenkins gave that commitment. Now, some students may decide it's not the best fit for them. That's a whole nother matter.
So now, you're gonna change the application process, is that what you're saying?
No.
They're no longer have to go apply, because they're not kids from the Med East. Let me tell you all you have to do to get to that school. You need an educator, maybe a principal, to give you a resume. You need an outside source to give you a resume. The parents have to do a resume, and a child has to do a resume to get accepted in that school. So what you're sitting up here telling me is, that these kids can springboard from the middle school into Med East without their process, is that what you're saying?
We are saying it's now one school, it's a sixth-to-twelve, and that the eighth graders will have a preference to go into the ninth grade. I think to the extent we're gonna use that exact same process is, it gets a fair point, but I'm telling you, the eighth graders will have a preference to go into the ninth grade.
We know that the regular schools have an application process that they must complete. And the application process designed around the biggest and brightest children. It leaves the children with special needs and the other children out. So I ask you again the same question.
And I will again give you the same answer. They're going to have a preference to go.
The application still wouldn't be done for those children to get to that school.
They will have a preference.
You're still being told me that every child will have the opportunity to go to Med East, then you're not telling me the truth.
They will have a preference.
I'm not the target.
They will have a preference. Mr. Barfield.
Basically, you know what I was talking about when I was presenting to the meeting at Hatch? What I'm concerned against, what the public's notice meant, what's gonna be the curriculum that's gonna be taught to the middle school? And the fact is that we know that Hatch is the only middle school in Parkside. So if they don't fit the model in Med East, what is the alternative? The other part is, what she said, is what happens to that special need population that's at Forest Hill and is at Hatch, the service to be provided, where we know that even though Med East has a small number of special needs students, they don't have the larger amount that's gonna be the influx that's gonna take place in that school. So when you do this, we hope that that support is there. And not only that, I can't imagine that the principal is gonna be able to manage Med East School and then a whole total of middle school, where you have students with all these different issues, that that's gonna be overwhelming for one person. So we hope that you do keep the current principal that's over in town, and not bring the very person that was over at Forest Hill that caused so much controversy, that we see this an issue of how they deal with our minority children. We hope that you strongly take that in consideration, so we know that that school needs to support from another field, to be fair to Mr. Jenkins, and that those resources are there to help those disadvantaged students, right? That's not getting no service now, right? That we know if that's gonna be successful, because all the students are not gonna fit the Med East model, the curriculum should be in place where they leave those students to, even if they choose to want to go to a Creative Arts or a middle school, that, you know, that that is a feeder, not just a feeder for Med East, but a feeder for all the schools, because we don't have the alternative middle school and Parkside. So we need to see what your plan B is, what is transportation, right?
I really appreciate that, and we're gonna keep this dialogue going. And if you remember, what Mr. Jenkins said was that he sees this as a great opportunity, where he's not gonna implement, the idea is not that we're gonna implement the big-picture model a hundred percent in the middle school. He's gonna introduce the students to the big-picture model, and he sees it as an opportunity to get those students better prepared by the time they're ninth graders in Med East. So he's really excited about this, and he's been actually saying, "You should give us a middle school before we ever made this decision." And so, you know, I'm excited about it, but you're right, we are gonna have the interest of all those students in mind, and you're right, that the supports and resources need to be there. I agree with you. Okay. I'm gonna move over, I'm gonna move now on to the district highlights. Just a quick calendar check here, so the dates that are in yellow are dates that schools are off as we head into spring break, starting with Good Friday. And so, the only additional note is that the district office, the central office, is also closed on that Friday, and then the central office is opened Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of the following week, and then administrative holiday on Friday, April the first. So schools are off on all the yellow dates, and then the central office is open on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I said that right, right? Yeah, I said that right? I just want to acknowledge the Camden High boys basketball team, who had a heck of a run, and I know a lot of people here were at the game, I was at the game, it was a heartbreaking loss. It doesn't take anything away from them as a team and their accomplishments, and so just want to recognize them being state runners-up. You know, Camden's one of the few cities where, you know, being a state runner-up, folks are still wanting a little bit more, and I can understand that, given the eleven state championships that are hanging from the rafters. But clearly, we want to recognize and celebrate the students, because they certainly put their hearts into it, and also the coaching staff who worked incredibly hard. The Tiger, the Girls, the Woodrow Wilson female basketball team, the Lady Tigers were in rebuilding mode after a state championship in two thousand and fourteen and a sectional championship in two thousand and fifteen. So the two thousand and sixteen team started with three or four freshmen playing in any given game. So, I mean, clearly, in rebuilding mode when that's the case, and the team was led by junior Tiara Bush and freshman Amani Holloway, both of whom made the all-conference team this year, so we're incredibly proud of what they did. Some pictures from H.B. Wilson's celebration of Black History Month, and they recognize and honor the Harlem Renaissance. So they did a full month of activities, and the theme was the Harlem Renaissance, and all grade levels collaborated. So the students participated in a number of different projects over the course of the month. These are some highlights and pictures from the Woodrow Wilson Annual Family Night. So that was on Wednesday, March the sixteenth. It hosted its annual family night to showcase student work and provide teachers and parents an opportunity to socialize and get to know each other outside of the parent-teacher conferences or on report card night. So this is kind of above and beyond the standard expectations. And, you know, by all accounts, the gym was buzzing, a lot of activities, and a huge turnout. Donors Choose. So we had on March the ninth, this was a bit of a surprise, where a couple funders statewide basically funded every project that was up on Donors Choose, including, of course, all the Camden projects. So on March ninth, over thirty Camden projects were fully funded through a campaign called Best School Day. It was a social media campaign, and so all of our projects were funded. So we secured commitments from donors to fund projects. In total, I should say, since we began this overall initiative, over three, almost two hundred Camden teachers across thirty-eight different schools have had over three hundred projects funded. And that is to the tune of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of donations to our schools. And that's a big deal. So if you talk to any teachers who are constantly putting projects up, you know, they'll tell you the benefits of these donations to their classrooms. It goes a long way. When I was a classroom teacher, I was constantly putting projects on Donors Choose, and it made a big, big difference in my classroom. Give a shout-out and a thank you to those who attended the Creative Arts Morgan Village Black History Month performance, and of course, a huge shout-out and thank you to the students who were the stars of the show. And we will close by recognizing our retirees when we go back up on stage.
The Camden Board of Education Board would like to recognize our retirements. Sandy Assam, professional A, Creative Arts Morgan Village Academy, twenty-six years, four months. Brenda Blake, teacher of special education, Dudley Family School, eighteen years, seven months. Pamela Bright, clerk III, Sharp Elementary, twenty-seven years, ten months. Yubaldo Burgas, custodian E, mechanic, warehouse, ten years, six months. Pamela Christie, clerk II B, Division of Innovation, twenty-five years, five months. Sharon Di Bartolo, teacher of the handicap, H.B. Wilson, fifteen years, six months. Angela Jones, teacher of special education, Summer Elementary School, twenty-one years, two months. Giuseppe Legger, security officer, Cooper's Point Family School, thirteen years. Margaret Maxwell Austin, coordinator, finance and operations, thirty years, eight months. Bonnie Marigla, professional A, Cooper's Point Family School, thirty years, six months. Brett Moonen, teacher of science and chemistry, Camden High School, eighteen years. Gail Norris, professional A, Forest Hill Elementary Schools, twenty-six years, four months. Lisa Pierce, teacher of special education, Melina Elementary School, twenty-one years, nine months. Volga Press, teacher of ESL, Woodrow Wilson High School, eleven years, nine months. Farina Pierce, teacher of special education, Woodrow Wilson High School, eight years, one month. Teacher Thomas Schilling, teacher of special education, Davis Elementary School, seven years, eight months. And Mary Stahl, teacher of elementary Cattle Family School, nineteen years. Once again, the Camden City Board of Education and Camden Advisory Board would like to thank you for your years of service to our children and our families and the communities.
Thank you. Turn it over to Regina Robinson, our SBA, to present the business office agenda items.
The board secretary, oh, excuse me, respectfully presents the business office agenda items for approval, including the bill list, the financial reports, and thirteen board resolutions. Trying to get back over to the superintendent.
Any questions, comments on the superintendent's agenda items, the presentation, or the business office agenda items?
Now, before you do the comment? Hey, Ma, I just have a comment on the presentation regarding promise number three. During the call, when we were being informed regarding the school policy, just wanted to make sure that, you know, I echo that my, it's imperative that with the grading policy, I'm excited for it, and great job to our student reps who played a big role in this, that through the curriculum rolling out, that we have as much support as possible for the students who will have challenges in reaching the new student policy benchmarks. I think it's very imperative that we, you know, be sensitive to that, and that, you know, that be something that, you know, if you need our involvement with, that, you know, we'll be more than happy to, through the committees, through whatever respective committee. But, you know, so I'm excited for the grading policy, but with the new curriculum rolling out and things that soar, and the testing, and, you know, we just need to make sure that we have as much support for the students who will have a little bit more challenges reaching that.
Great, thanks. You know, the conversation with the students began by them telling us that ninety to ninety-two was not an A previously, and so we are in alignment there. And I think where we are sitting right now is that ninety and above, do you get the full four-point-oh A-plus credit, or do you differentiate A-minus all the way up to A-plus from a GPA standpoint? So I know we've had some really healthy debates with Ms. McCombs and Joanna Black from our team, our chief performance officer, with our student board met reps. So we're hoping to finalize that. Anything you want to add, Ms. McCombs?
No, nothing that you haven't said, just that the debates were healthy, and they were definitely a credit to our students, our student board reps. They're taking everything very, very seriously, and they're coming to the table prepared with evidence, with research. And that is something that is enlightening, and then that should be highlighted, and that should be celebrated, and that should be praised. But we're going to work together with them so that the decision that's made is collaborative, and they're seeing the full process of debating, of presenting their arguments, and it is very, it's something that is very, very refreshing to see, and I'm so proud of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are, that's right. We are so proud of them.
All right, let's move, unless there are any other.
I had a few questions, but I have spoken with Ms. Robinson, and she will get the information back to me tomorrow.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
Is that one?
I have a question that's brought to me by community members. People want to know what we're doing or what we plan to do about getting back to that gifted and talented education segment that we had in the past, okay? My daughter was a student in the academically talented class, and people want to know, what are we going to do about our talent? We have a lot of talented students, and want to know what we're going to do to advance their education.
Yeah, I can say the same thing. Similar to you, Ms. Atwell, I remember being at Hatch Middle School and under Dr. Mary Arnold Frazier and being in the AT program at Hatch Middle School. So I know that that's something that is very, very much needed. And then we have the CHIPS program also in the city for many years. As you know, we're doing a complete overhaul of our curriculum, so we focus on reading and math, and we're still tweaking that and working on building the science and social studies curriculum as we speak. After we have that foundational curriculum, then we'll move forward to looking at the gifted and talented components. What we encourage teachers to do now is through their differentiation of instruction within the classrooms, to make sure that they're tiering instruction, so they're not only reaching those students who are behind, but they're also making sure that those students who are advanced are getting the appropriate instruction as well, until we can have a set-aside standalone program like we had before. But it is something that's very much needed, and we agree.
Is there any, like, target date, like, 2018 or 2020, or any sort of target date for that?
I don't have a target date for you right now. I'd rather wait to see and be very honest with you after our science and social studies curriculum is built, and then work, I can say tentatively, on next year, working through it, hopefully for a launch in the following year. But I don't want to commit until I'm able to talk with my team.
Why don't we say, just as a follow-up, that at the next board meeting, we'll present to you all some thoughts as far as what this could look like?
I'll do that.
As part of the superintendent's presentation, and then we'll have Ms. McCombs speak to that in more detail, the work she and her team are doing.
Thank you. That's part of what we, for the, 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 for the,
prepared for it, just like SATs and ACTs, we need to get prepared for it as well. So it's like, if this is a test, then we need to get prepared. So it's like, we brought up in the board, if we want to be a doctor, you got to pass this big test, but they get prepared for it. And it's like, we're not. Our teachers have lesson plans that they have to focus on. They can't stop their lesson plan to bring this test. And it's like, what can you guys do for these students that have to take this test? And it's another thing that I want to bring up again. I live in Kramer Hill, and due to the state law, you have to be two, more than two point five away to live, to get bus transportation. And it's like, I wanted to see what we could do, because at the end of the day, it's not fair, because I'm a student that lives in Kramer, and sometimes has to walk from her house to Wilson, rain or shine, because I don't live two point five away. So it's like, what can you guys do to help us out? I go to Wilson, you can't come to school after eight oh five, because you'll get a detention. And it's like, we have siblings that we need to take as well. And it's like, it's just things that I feel like need to be addressed, be and put on before anything. And there's grading schedule, and it's like, this is important, because I will get a nine D on my test, and that wouldn't be an A, that would be a B. And I worked hard, I studied till eleven, twelve o'clock to get a hundred, but I didn't to get an A, but I get a B. And it's just things that, if we want to be the school of rise, it's things that, as well, the board needs to put in, and needs to help us, put in programs that can help us, so we can be the school of rise, and the students can probably say, yes, I'm from Camden, and yes, I graduated from a public school. Thank you.
My name is Donia Kristin, I attend Med East High School. The first thing I want to talk about, piggybacks off of what Beatrice just said, we need to work on better ways to instill strategies needed for the Park test into our everyday learning. For example, we feel like we're not prepared for it, that's the problem. The solution is to instill the Park strategies into our everyday learning, so that when we get to the Park, we won't feel unprepared, because it'll be the same thing that we've been learning all quarter or all year. The second thing I want to point on is very important to our school and to the upcoming year. We're going to combine with Hatch into Hatch's building. I feel like it's a great opportunity for both schools. One, because it's a good opportunity for Hatch and Med East to become brother sister, and to, for us to lead Hatch's students, and for us to become better leaders. What we've noticed in the years, in the past two years, are that our underclassmen aren't as good as leaders as our past, our past underclassmen. And it's because they, it's all with the generation now. And a better way to help them be better leaders is to have somebody they need to be a role model for. And that'll help Hatch students who need that extra role model in their everyday life, to see people who, we, when we're in high, when we go to Med East, we're taught to be a leader, we're taught to build relationships. So I don't think that the relationship part is such a bad idea, housing high school students and middle school students in the same building. We have a bigger space. We needed that bigger space, because there are one hundred and twenty-five of us in one small space, one small school, that we all are in hallways learning right now. And this will grant us a bigger space to actually do work and have classrooms with doors that close. Teachers will be able to have their own bathrooms, instead of sharing them with students. We need to make sure that we remember the mistakes that were made from Creative Arts when they collaborated with Morgan Village. There were, like, in the beginning, it was obviously a rocky start, because it was something that was never done before. One thing that we need to remember is the issues that went on, and how we can make sure that those issues don't transfer to this same thing that's going to happen. I think that all our eighth grade students who still want to become Med East students next year, will still go through the same application process. Med East's middle school, however, will learn the same type of education we do in high school, with our same type of curriculum. We will still teach them how to do resumes, how to do cover letters, have interviews with people, build relationships. And these, all these things don't have to just go into being a Med East high school student. They, these, these skills that we're teaching the middle school students can help them go into any high school or any institution that they want to. It's not just, I learned how to do all these things in middle school here, and it's because I need to go to Med East, because I can take those talents to Camden High, to Creative Arts, to charter school if I wanted to, anywhere. And also, I'd like to speak on our actual, this year, we have, we had a class that was actually for IEP students. Last year, we had two IEP leaders in our IEP wing, and with their own classroom, and they would just go to each class and help the students out, and whatever they were weakened. Now, our upcoming freshmen had, there were three freshman classes, and one with half of them being IEP students, with an IEP leader in that classroom. Okay. I want to thank Airmark, because we talked to Airmark every month, and this is the first month that I actually heard something back from Airmark, and I had a conversation with the leader in my, in my school, and it was a good conversation that was needed. So thank you to Airmark. And lastly, I want to talk about my school's blood drive that I'll be running tomorrow. Donating two pipes of blood saves a life. If you know anybody who gets transplants, or needs any blood that's donated to them, it's really big and important to have different types of blood to give to people, because it ultimately saves a life. And us in the majority of minority community know that the blood supply for getting sick cell, or having any type of blood transplant are high in the higher minority community. So I encourage everyone here, while I formally invite all of you, to come to the Med East Blood Drive from eight thirty to one thirty tomorrow, and it'll be in the school's E-Wing. You can call the school if you have any questions or anything about it, and thank you so much.
Heard the follow-up. But I first want to touch on a topic that they both stated, and Ms. Vita, I agree with you, Ms. Vita. I feel as though there should be an application process to get into Med East High School, only because it maintains a sense of integrity for the high school, and it allows the students to value their experience while they're in there. It allows the students to work harder in the school, because they worked hard to get in. So they would never degrade the work they put in by disrespecting the name of the school. It just makes sense. Why would I work hard for something that I don't want? And also, yes, sometimes it might be a challenge for the middle school to adapt to the traditions of the high schools and the standard that they set. But to be honest, I'm actually excited for the schools to combine. Just getting me excited to explain it, only because I was one of the first middle schoolers in Creative Arts Morgan Village Academy. And I can honestly say, when I was a seventh grader, the seniors of the high school being inside the school I was in was extremely beneficial, extremely beneficial to the development of myself as a person, only because when I was a seventh grader, the senior in that high school, the top senior, was a woman named Arnetta Johnson. Now, I don't know if you guys know who she is, but you know, now Arnetta Johnson, she's getting on Steve Harvey shows with Jill Scott. She has a room in Jill Scott's house. She just finished playing, you know, the Super Bowl with Beyonce, and was in the front. They didn't throw her in the back, they put her in the front. She travels the world with Tara Lee Carrington, plays with famous musician Tia Fuller. She's the bomb. And she was always the bomb, and she was the bomb in high school, and I got to see her work ethic as a seventh grader. And as, when you're a middle schooler, and just in middle school, the highest level, the highest level student you see is an eighth grader. I'm not, I'm not going to knock my eighth grade class that was above me, but they wasn't the best students. So honestly, as a seventh grader, I looked up to Arnetta, seen what she did, and she set the bar for how I want to be a person in life, how she worked to be, to be a great musician. Her level of musicianship and her mindset to how she wanted success, set the bar for how I need to, how I need to work, so I can be equally as successful in life. And I honestly thank God for Arnetta being in my school, because she helped me be the person I am today. Even when she got on to me and I hated it, if I started playing, she'd be like, yeah, your tone sucks, Josh, practice this, Josh, practice that. And I'd be like, shut up, Arnetta, why are you messing with me? But it's, on the other side, it's that connection that really happens when you combine the two schools, that the middle schoolers start to become little brothers and sisters. Even I do it. And I say, I would never do that to a middle schooler, because I used to hate it when I was a middle schooler. But now I see the middle schoolers come in, they, with their sucky tones, and they don't know their scales, and I say the same thing she does, because it helped me become a better person, you know? But is it for every school? No, but I'm excited, because, you know, I feel as though middle schoolers can look up to Med East students, because she, the lady sitting right beside me is a Med East student, Donia Kristin, and if you ever met her, you will realize that she's a very analytical person, that she's very meticulous with her work, and above all, she's a problem solver. And that's a skill that a lot of kids need to learn in Camden at an early age, because the problem with a lot of Camden students is we're not good at solving problems. So if I can look up to somebody like her, and study some of her qualities in line to become the person she became, I can get that quality. And, you know, this is just my personal philosophy, society values you on how many problems you can solve. No, that's a, that's a long discussion, I don't want to get into it, but society values you on how many problems you can solve, which ties me into Park. So, you know, I wasn't for Park, I'm going to just be honest. I hated Park when they first introduced it. I said it's a trap, but I still took the test anyway, because like I say, I'm a kind of a cocky guy, I just wanted to prove that I was smart. So then I sat down, I took the test, and I said, yeah, it's a setup, they cheating, it's a setup, they trying to make us all look bad, I didn't know anything. I was like, they can't possibly expect me to know this information. Then I took the PSAT, and I felt the exact same way. So saying I'm not prepared to take a test is not an excuse to take it, because then after studying, now I'm, now I'm the student that stays up till two o'clock in the morning and studying every day, only because I've realized that I'm so far behind, that I'm competing against kids that takes the PSAT and think it's child's play. It's like, if you took a spelling bee test for a fourth grader, you would get a hundred percent, because it's for a fourth grader, it's below level. Some kids my age in high school has that same mindset for the SAT and the PSAT. And when studying, I realized that the math isn't hard, they're not studying how good you are at math, at literacy. The ACT is studying how good you are at science, it's studying how good you are at solving problems. If you look at it, the problems say stuff like this, okay, X plus Y is two, what's X plus Y plus one? Instead, it was saying, what's one plus one plus one? That's how the problem in the SAT is, because it's not trying to make the math hard, it only goes up to algebra two. And now some of us are learning pre-calculus, it has no hard math. It's putting real-life situations, and actually creating equations, make, forcing you to create equations to solve problems that adults solve in everyday life. You know, doctors get paid a lot, a lot because they solve lives, lawyers get paid a lot because they solve, because they defend people, detectives get paid a lot because they solve cases. And I was just put in a situation today where I had to do the exact same thing, and I'm like, dang, the SAT is really trying to prepare me to be an upstanding citizen in life. And the people that score high on the SAT make money, make more money than usual, only because they're better at solving problems, which leads me into my other topic. I started today a company, a club in my school called AIM, the Artistic Involvement Movement. I know I've been talking about trying to get music in schools for a lot of the board meetings, but this was the first day that we made an actual leap of faith, and we got something done. We made a partnership with Cream today, and I was speaking to the guidance counselor, and she allowed us to implement our program in their school. Just for a little background, what our program is, the Artistic Involvement Movement, the goal is a little bit bigger than getting the arts in schools. We're trying to create something called a Camden Renaissance. For example, we believe that it's not just the schools, but the entire city has starting to, has started to slowly diminish in the value they have for the arts. Not that the programs are accessible, people just aren't accessing it. It's not being advertised to the students, it's not being introduced to the students. So we, me, myself, Joshua Sims, my friend Brandon Ramos, my friend Jacenia Hernandez, started a club that will help at least go into the schools of elementary schools and introduce them to the arts. Now, to be honest, we can't buy ourselves with just a one weekly lesson, we can't provide them with enough skills for them to actually take the art serious. That's why we do need more music teachers, it's a must. We do need more artistic arts inside the schools for them to take on, but at least we can introduce them to the idea. And when we played our instruments today, when we, when they seen us dance, when they seen us draw, when they seen us show our poetry, the kids seemed so interested in it, like it was something they had never seen before, something that they was like, wow, their eyes were open to a whole new world of possibilities. And then one of the teachers asked me, they said, yeah, so how do you feel about kids that have bad behavior? And we all looked at each other and laughed, because when I remember myself in elementary school, I wasn't what most people would consider a good kid, you know? I was talkative, I would curse, I was one of those kids, I was the pain in the neck. But what made me serious was the art. It was my third grade year when I picked up a trumpet, and that was the first time I ever received all A's in any class. What turned me around was that, when you take one thing serious, your whole perspective on life changed, you have to take everything serious. Now, I take seriously in helping my city, I'm taking seriously on providing my kids, peers around me with better opportunities, so they can be more successful. And now I'm getting into now trying to learn how to solve problems. So now I'll take the SAT series, I take the PSAT series, and I encourage everyone to take the Park series, even though, yes, I was against it. I was, I know a lot of people still are, and I don't want to start the debate, I don't want to be on the enemy team, please don't shoot me. But the reality is, we're not prepared to take the Park, because we're not good at being analytical, we're not good at solving problems, because we're not being done, trained to do it at middle school, which is why I'm so, I'm so happy Hatch can learn how to do that from Mark, from Med East at an earlier age, and that the Park was going to help train us to do better on these tests, was going to help us become better people in life. Thank you.
I don't know how I totally forgot to say this, small, well, it's not a small issue, this one issue that I only have about moving, us moving to Hatch, I won't be here, but I've been at Med East for three and a half years, because I was a transfer student. I lived in North Camden, and I traveled to Parkside, and I'd never received bus tickets. And I had to spend sixty-one, six, like sixty-one dollars a month just to get to school. This is when I wasn't working, so I only used that bus ticket to get to school. Now, there are students that go to my school who receive bus tickets, so they can go to school at Med East's location right now. Now, what happens to those students when we go to Hatch? Will the same rule apply? Will they have to, if they don't meet that requirement, will they have to find their own way to school, basically? Or will the board be able to grandfather that rule over to them, is my question?
Yeah, so the way, the rule will still be consistent, but the distance will be from the student's home to Hatch, as opposed to student's home to the Med East building, the current Med East building. This is an issue that comes up almost at every public meeting that I go to, and Beatrice, you mentioned it as well, obviously. So what we've done is, we're trying to advocate for change in the state law, because this is a state law. Two and a half miles or further away for high school students, you get a bus ticket, and two miles or further away for K to eight students, and you get yellow busing. That doesn't apply to special ed students, who all get yellow busing, as per their IEP. So I think it's an unfair state law, in that it's a one-size-fits-all, and I think living two point two miles away as a high school student, not meeting the two and a half mile requisite, is different in Camden than in Cherry Hill, and in Hannfield, and in other places. And, and so, we have had very constant dialogue with local elected officials, assembly members, state senators, et cetera, and there is a potential bill that's going to be put out for vote. Now, I don't know, like, this is a complicated process, and these things never move as fast as you want them to, but we have been very, very consistently advocating, and we are actually organizing a meeting for students to meet with our elected officials, to tell them their personal stories, because I think that those testimonials will help our legislators move with a greater sense of urgency, and would love for all three of you, to the extent you're interested, to join that meeting.
I have one, I forgot about this. I want to thank Samira Samara Nichols and his students from Creative Arts that came and performed at Woodrow Wilson High School, you guys did an amazing job. Now, the most important thing that I wanted to ask, you guys know that new school that they're going to build in Kramer, Mastery, I got one question, how much did it take for that building to get built?
How much is in, like, how much is going to be spent to build the building? Well, from the district, we're not putting any capital into the building, so Mastery uses their per pupil funding to then finance and build a new building. So we are not putting any capital in, because we don't have any capital. The School Development Authority has capital, and that's, that's the entity that's going to be renovating Camden High and other buildings. Mastery uses its own capital that they finance in the free markets.
So the board didn't send no money to them for that building?
That we, so, so we're a pass-through for per pupil funding, so the dollars follow the student, so for every student that goes to Mastery, they get a certain amount of money, which is, happens to be less than what the district receives. And then from that pool of money, they can then finance and raise, you know, a bond or what have you, to then build their own building. But we are not allocating any capital.
Okay. So I have three questions that y'all don't have to answer me. How much, how much did y'all send to public schools? How much money did you guys send to Woodrow Wilson High School for new technology? How much money did you send to public schools who have two thousand and eight textbooks? How much money did you send to us? I'm still waiting for a library that y'all promised me at Woodrow Wilson High School. I'm still waiting for the computers that we were promised. So my question is for tonight, how much money are you guys are going to send to public schools? That's my question.
Yeah, Beatrice, we'll, we'll follow up with you with the exact numbers, and I, I know that on a lot of days and a lot of weeks, Woodrow Wilson feels under-resourced. At the same time, we'll show you and prove it out in the numbers that we're certainly not by any means neglecting Woodrow Wilson. It is, it is near and dear to our hearts. Two years ago, we created a technology pilot that put two to three hundred new devices in, and over, and this past year, we also purchased more devices. Are there enough, I'd love for every student to have their own device, and to, you know, bring the ratio even further down from four to one, but that's, that's one of the best device, student-to-device ratios in the state. And technology isn't everything either. I think you're pointing to a lot of different concerns in Woodrow Wilson, and I think that's a bigger conversation to be had. But we can show you, we can show you the facts, we can show you the data, by no means are we neglecting Woodrow Wilson. What we're dealing with are decades and decades of challenges that we've inherited, and sometimes resource distribution in and of itself is an issue. Like, when I first came in, we found there were closets, in some cases warehouses of resources, that for whatever reason weren't being disseminated, and we're still trying to work through those issues. So appreciate the thought and the question, and I think it's a bigger conversation we should continue to have, but we will follow up and show you the data on that.
So you said that we did get something from, you guys did send something to Woodrow Wilson High School?
Yeah, of cour, of course, and we'll, we'll prove that, we'll prove that out to you. So, yes.
Yes, I would like to see the proof.
Yeah, we'll look forward to the conversation. So I want to thank all of our student board members. I want to have Ms. McCombs quickly weigh in, as all three of you, at least I know two of you commented on preparation for Park and alignment with Common Core, and just talk about how, you know, the Common Core assesses, or excuse me, Park assesses Common Core standards and the work we're doing to align our teaching to that.
Yep, and that's exactly what I was going to say, for the superintendent, that each of you mentioned the concern about being prepared for Park, and we are equally concerned, and we have commissioned school leaders in our professional development sessions with them. We have by every other week, professional development sessions with our school leaders, and they also receive coaching from our school support officers and from our chief academic officer. And the expectation is that our teachers will be implementing the curriculum that's set forth by the district, that, that curriculum is aligned to the standards. Park is aligned to the standards. But in addition to that, we have commissioned our school leaders to have conversations with staff members around not only how will we increase the participation rate, but also what test-taking strategies will be given to students, so that you are able to know how to approach, I think that's what Josh was saying, how to approach the problems from an analytical mindset, so that you are equipped for success. So those discussions are being had, those dialogues are had, but that is an expectation that we're expecting to see. So look forward to talking with you, to triangulate, to make sure that that's what's getting to the classroom. So thank you for that comment.
Thank you, Ms. McCombs. So in accordance with the powers vested in the state district superintendent, under title eighteen A, I hereby approve today superintendent agenda items and business office agenda items. I'm going to turn it over to our general counsel for the public comment portion of the meeting.
Rules for public comment, the Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. The public comment period is your time to be heard on the agenda items in this meeting. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes, you will be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all of your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or his designee will address your questions to the extent provided by law. First commenter is Judith Mota.
No.
No, the budget hearing is at seven thirty, after this meeting.
The business agenda items, but not the budget. There's a separate meeting after, this is what we did last year, too. I don't know what resolution nine is.
The bis- the business agenda items, but not the budget. There's a separate meeting after, this is what we did last year too. I, I don't know what resolution nine is. If it's resolution nine from the business agenda items for the five-thirty meeting, then yes, I just approve that.
It shouldn't be in there. It'd be part of the second meeting.
It shouldn't be in there?
All right, so we'll, we'll remove, uh, number nine.
Okay.
From the approval. Thank, thanks for pointing that out.
Hey, Ms. Mota.
Hi, Mr. Rohanaher. I just came, um, to let you guys know that everybody's got these attacks on. I took my kids out of public school because I felt like their educational needs weren't being met. Um, they're currently in Mastery Schools, which is also a public school. Um, they don't charge tuition or none of that for the children to get in. Um, I just do have a couple of things to comment on, which is awesome. Um, my child, my kindergartner, was the first one to come into Mastery as a kindergarten versus my other children who came into public school first. So from a, a smaller head start center into Mastery, my son is now almost a Level E reader. He reads, he writes. His benchmarks are always at a hundred percent. Um, they actually placed him into first grade classes to do first grade work, although he's not a first grader. Um, my children didn't achieve these goals in the public schools. So I'm not bashing the public schools or saying anything negative about them because my kids were in them for years. But, the curriculum was not set up right for them. So, that was it. Everybody's got so much to say about the monies and this and that. But Mastery so far has funded themselves. The activities for the children, they provided a better curriculum. They have a lot of programs for them, as far as, like, activities and stuff to keep these children involved, besides just the school day. So, I mean, that, that's about it. I've had a great experience so far. Thank you.
Number two, Nemeuel Diaz.
Buenas noches. Yo vengo de la escuela Mastery.
Good evening, I come from the Mastery School.
Eh, yo saque mi niño de la escuela pública.
I took my child out from public school system.
Mastery.
And he's currently in the Mastery School system.
El ha progresado mucho.
He has progressed much.
Eh, no me hablaba español.
He did not speak Spanish.
Eh, los maestros son muy buenos en Mastery. Ellos tienen inglés español.
The Mastery teachers are excellent. They teach them Spanish and English.
Le, le dedican unas dos horas en español al niño.
They dedicate about two hours diariamente?
Diario.
Daily in Spanish.
Eh, me da, este, me siento contento con ellos porque los están capacitados. Algún problema del niño, luego tito nos habla.
Um, I'm very satisfied with their work because if there's any problem with my child, they immediately contact me.
Eh, nos dan, este, explicaciones bien del niño, si se porta bien, se porta mal.
And, and same token, they give us a good report if he's, uh, behaving well.
Y ahorita el niño me está hablando, me está leyendo en español y me está, este, hablando español bastante.
And right now, my child is actually reading and speaking Spanish.
Yo no tengo nada cuando las escuelas públicas.
I have nothing against public schools.
Eh, en ese transcurso de que el niño me estaba viendo en la escuela, en un mes me cambiaron tres maestros al niño.
But I do want to say that in the one month that my child was enrolled in public schools, they changed teachers three times.
El niño me decían que no estaba aprendiendo.
They would tell me my child was not learning.
Eh, yo fui, hablé con el director, le dije que por qué me había cambiado al niño tres maestros en tres, en un mes.
I spoke directly with the principal and asked why was my child moved around three times.
Eh, y ahora estoy bien con la escuela Mastery.
But I am satisfied with Mastery.
Me siento contento.
I'm happy.
Eh, yo soy un, un, este, una persona que no es, este, no, no soy muy preparado.
I myself am not a very well-prepared man.
Eh, me, me, ellos me explican bien sobre el niño cómo se porta.
But the teachers and the staff actually take time to explain to me about my child's conduct.
Sí, yo les recomiendo a muchos que experimenten con la escuela Mastery.
I recommend that, um, anyone, um, who's interested can experience with Mastery Schools.
Son muy buenos maestros.
Very good teachers.
Y es todo, gracias.
And that is all, thank you.
Number three, Jackie Moreno. Number four, Ulysses Delgado.
Ulysses Delgado, thirty-one ninety-seven Federal Street, one of the highest taxpayers in the city of Camden. Mr. Superintendent, we've been having lately little problems at Woodrow Wilson School in the outside. Kids are fighting, jumping. My son got beat up by four kids. He was taken to the hospital. Then he, they punish him and they give him a day off for fighting. That's unexcusable. But that's all right. I'm here today, I spoken to you two months ago regarding, we want, uh, make Woodrow Wilson High School, a trade school, vocational school. I would like to see that happen. I, I spoke to Mr. Principal there, Mr. Miles over there. I've been speaking to the kids and they ready for it. And I appreciate it. You do the best you can to make that happen for us. Because the kids are ready to close the school down to demonstrate, to take it to Trenton or take it to your office. There've been money for Woodrow Wilson High School, going over Pine Point School. Y'all want to make that a high school? Ain't no problem. But I want my skilled schools that, when I went to Woodrow Wilson High School, I learned carpentry, plumbing, air conditioning, and a whole lot of stuff in that school. And a lot of our kids today, they're not ready to go to college. Everybody's not ready to go to college. But I want to have some kind of trade school at Woodrow Wilson High School so our kids could go to. And we're having problems at Twenty-Eighth and Mickle. Still, a lot of drug activities in there. My grandkids go to that school. I've been fighting with the police department. I want that shut down. I would like to see a cop, like I told you about two months ago. While our kids are going to school, I like to see a police officer right near where that drug area is so our kids could feel safe. I've been talking to my grandkids there and they're afraid when, when they, when they see all these drug dealers. Couple of years ago, there was, um, the owner of that store right there got killed by, got killed. I want to see safe. East Camden is getting real bad, Mr. Superintendent. They've been bringing in houses like crazy. I got a report from the police department. They've been walking around trying to do the best they can. But it seems like our police department in the city of Camden, as they graduate, they quit. They find other jobs. And I'd like to, I'd like for you one day to train our, our security officers to be secondary, secondary, uh, law enforcement so that they can have the skills as, and learn and training as a police officer. That way, they could do a better, more better job in our Board of Education schools right here in our schools. So our kids could feel safe. My kids are not feeling safe in Wilson. I'd like to see the police officers out there again, like they always do after school. They cut down for a while. I would like to see that happen. And I would like for you to see Woodrow Wilson, a vocational school, trade school. I appreciate it. And you will make my day if that happens. Thank you.
Number five, Magalisa Davis.
Magalisa Davis is glad to be black again. Madam President and Vice President, I'd like to take this opportunity, uh, out of twelve months out of the year, one month to celebrate women. But particularly, the original woman that all other ethnic groups come from. The Nubian woman. The woman who's kissed by God with melon in their skin. And I say this to you, we walk as black people from the slave ships to the White House. And right there is a black woman there too. So we celebrate all the contributions that black women have made in this country and made to the world. And I say that, a she, a she, a she. Now, uh, you have augmented my, uh, presentation here, Mr. Superintendent, but I'm going to take the opportunity, I plan to come back and do a full court press with you on this here issue around the water. Uh, I tried to mention that to you when y'all was paying the bill, about the fact that we were responsible for putting that water in it. We had to fight our own people to get that water into the school district. But think about this. If the water is can, is, i- in the schools is bad enough that they drinking bottled water, what do you think about the kids are going home and drinking and washing and bathing in that stuff? Oh, that's some deep stuff. And you can associate that with the mental disorder, kidneys, liver, and there's no such thing as fifteen per parts per billion in the system of a child. A lot of our children right now are suffering and don't even associate it with the water. Flint is the eye-opening, but we've been on this case. And, and the other comment, real quick. You said something about the flushers, that we, uh, pushed that issue, that you got automatic flushers? Well, suppose I tell you that some of those flushers in the school are not working. Not working. And the other thing that I see here on the report, that it, it sinuates that, um, the automatic flushers in the schools, which they're not on. It says in certain schools, uh, East Camden Middle, no longer district school. And it also says that the flush is not working. So, it's still our babies. And it should not be identified, and this is, this is the la- the fifteen report. Fifteen, uh, year fifteen, quarter report on these automatic flushers. So what I'm saying to you, that we got a lot of sick schools. But think about what is going on with these children that don't drink bottled water at home, but drink out of the, uh, for preparation of food, showers. This is huge. And we got to take the opportunity and learn the lessons from Flint. They was drinking toxic waste. Three hundred, uh, what, three thousand per parts per billion? Can you imagine that? They had sores on their face because they wanted to save money. We're not gonna let you get away, we're not saving money and, and, uh, getting those automatic flushers, uh, fixed. Now, my other.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, your time is up.
Okay, I will be back, uh, Mr. Paymar. I want to talk about, uh, professional people that work for the district, that character assessment, my win.
Number six, Darlene Gray.
Good evening, Superintendent and the Camden City Board. Uh, my name is Darlene Gray and I'm here on behalf of Always Love Ministry. I came to you in January asking, could I come back to present release time education? I don't know if parents know, but you have a right where your children can learn about God during their school day. It's a constitutional right. Our children are lost and they need hope. They need God. We just did a pledge, we're one nation under God, but are we really? We used to be. Well, release time education, your child has the constitutional right to be pulled out of the school one hour a week to learn about God. And it's been very successful over in Philadelphia because children want to learn about God. They want to learn that God is their hope, that if they can, if, if God can use Noah who was a drunk, they can be used too. If God can use Rahab who was a prostitute, that there's hope for their mothers if their mothers are on drugs. They need to know hope. When Superintendent Rohatford leaves, whenever that day is, the, um, Camden City School District, they need to know they have a God that will never leave or forsake them. One hour a week, they can do it during their school time. Over in Philadelphia schools that we started, they go at lunchtime and they want to go and learn about God. So, I'm asking the, uh, Camden City School District to approve it because it's a little different over in Pennsylvania. All you need is a parent's permission and the schools have to honor it. The only thing a school has to do, they don't spend any money either, is to, uh, inform the faith-based organization what day and time that the child can be released for an hour a week. It is a powerful tool and it's changing lives. So, we're gonna ask the Camden City School District to consider letting God in. We are one nation under God, we are one community under God, we are one school under God, we are one family under God, and we are individual people under God. In Jesus's name, amen.
Number seven, Robin Whitey.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robin Whitey. I am a retired former administrator of Camden City. So it feels like I'm back home again and seeing some of my family members. Uh, I too am here to support release time education. And what I have to say about is, since I've been on board with it, I could reflect back to the times when I was an administrator. And I cannot tell you the number of students and staff members and parents that walked through my office door and began to share their problems with me and came in crying sometimes and sobbing and said, "Ms. Whitey, could you please just pray for me? Just pray with me. I just need some help." And I can understand adults doing that, but when you have students coming to you, elementary students and middle school students. And it made such an impact on me that I said, "These kids are crying out for help." They're crying out for something that, uh, the school system has been told that it cannot provide for them. I understand educating our minds and making sure that we can go out and be successful and contribute to the world, but there's a spirit part of us also that needs to be addressed. And if the school system is saying that they can't do it, release time education is here to help you with that. You're saying that you make partnerships with faith-based organizations. We are a faith-based organization where you don't have to do anything but supply the child, uh, give us the time to take them out for one hour a week. That's all they have to do, is one hour a week. We can build it around their lunchtimes because we know that oftentimes forty-five minutes in the lunchroom, well, we used to have fifty-five, I believe you changed it to forty-five now if I'm correct. Forty-five minutes with not enough staff, number one, to, uh, feed them lunch. Sometimes that oftentimes happens. And then the children eat in ten minutes and then they're in trouble for their other thirty-five minutes. So why not allow them, for those children who want to attend, to come and learn about God on their school day, to go to release time education? The young man on the, uh, uh, a little while ago, the student who was up there with you, he spoke about problem solving. The children that we have been working with, they have become greater problem solvers because we all have some ability to problem solve. But sometimes it needs to be refined and it needs to be nurtured a little bit so that children become better problem solvers. We even had children who, uh, at one time said, "Well, you know, Ms. Whitey, since we've been in this program," because they called me Ms. Robin or Ms. Whitey. They said, "You know what? I was getting ready to go back to school and fight because I was so mad. But you know what? I can't go fight now. I just came from Bible study. What am I supposed to do?" And we talked, we had that conversation and they begin to look at other ways of solving problems. So release time education not only helps their spiritual, but it helps children to become problem solvers. Rather than to become a bullying incident, it helps them to maintain the types of behaviors that they should have that's going to help make them successful. So I ask you not only to consider, but I ask you to approve release time education. Thank you for your time. I had my own time.
Number eight, Gary Frazier.
Okay, good evening. So, I first want to, uh, give an announcement. On Thursday, March the twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, six P.M., seven-thirty at First Refuge Baptist, Baptist Church, Park Boulevard in Camden, uh, there's going to be a discussion on Park. And you're right, as parents, um, you're right to know. So, I understand again that the district does gear up, uh, each year for students to be rendered Park. I think it is very safe, uh, to say that we all agree that we want our children to participate in certain tests that will gear them towards higher education. However, in doing so, we must also let our student bodies know what the realness is and the truth is as it applies to the state. So, I'm here to put this district on notice once again. On September ninth, twenty fifteen, New Jersey Commissioner of Education David Hesby sent a memo to school districts on how to accommodate students whose families or guardians refuse Park. Passing Park is not a requirement for students graduating in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, or the twenty nineteen school year. I would ask that this district would send those memos around to each schools that we would begin the process of putting the proper, um, things in channel for those students who would be, um, thinking about refusing the test. So students may use Park or a number of other options to meet graduation requirements, including ACT, SAT, PSAT, Accuplacer, um, and there's a. including ACT, SAT, PSAT, Accuplacer, um, and there's a few other tests that they can use, and also their student portfolio can be used as a graduation, um, uh, requirement. They could use that, other than taking the park. So I think that if we're going to have a conversation with the student bodies, the student bodies need to be brought up on where we are at, um, in the state. I will continue on and give them some more, uh, background to this, as I think it's necessary. Um, when we get the park in place, I would see the right for it to be administered to our children. This district knows our children are not prepared to take any park. This district knows we are not in compliance, or we are nowhere is ready, readily near for our children to take this exam. So I'm asking this district, what is the, uh, what will we do, uh, with the students who refuse it? What are you doing to provide the parents with the proper information to let them know that there are other graduation requirements that the students could use, um, as opposed to taking the park? Um, I would also bring it to your attention that Washington Township's entire school district has opted out of the park. And I would also say to this district that perhaps that we could do the same thing, and ask for reimbursement of those funds, that we might be able to utilize those into our schools, perhaps providing a better curriculum, technology, perhaps even fixing some of our other schools. Um, I also saw, too, in the budget tonight, uh, there was, um, there were some line items in terms of, uh, special education. Um, I mean, excuse me, adult education. I see there's two line items for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen year, and the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen year, where there's nothing. Is it that, that is categorized into one line item for the twenty sixteen? And if so, is that the current budget that is there?
Number nine, Vida Neal.
Good evening. I would like to speak on the special education. It seems, it's been brought to my attention through my Facebook blog, which is called The Problem Solver, that a lot of children are getting, are getting services that's needed. Now, you're outsourcing children out of the district into archway schools and other schools. There's been numerous problems with that bus transportation. The average child is getting there between a half an hour and forty-five minutes late. That time can't be made up. They're not getting breakfast. Some of the parents wait out there an hour for the bus. Now, you got some, some lady named down there at your, uh, office, named Miss Kelly Garlic, who wants to discipline the parents whose children don't make it there on time. Nevertheless, it's the district's problem that the children are being outsourced, it's the district's problem that the bus company is getting there late, but then she wants to take parents to court. I think you need to look into this, because there seems to be a problem with me. Another problem that I want to address on also, is about the Camden High. I'm, I also volunteer, even though I'm not a parent, at the PTO at Camden High, and I noticed that the Aramart people have the concession stands. Well, for years, that was a part of the PTO. And that money that was generated went to the students for trips and things of that nature. I'd like to know what are yous doing with the money, where's it going, and why isn't that a part of the PTO at Camden High with Joe Wilson? Aramart is making enough money. Now they making money off the children on the hot dogs? Another issue that I want to talk to you also, is about the renovations at Camden High. When are you gonna start them, how much money was allocated? You already said that the last meeting. But we need to know, when is this gonna get started? The children don't, should not go through another winter with a hundred-degree heat. And it also been reported to me at vet school, that the heat was a hundred and two degrees, three days ago. So you need to have thermostats, regulators, or something. I don't know what your ombudsman are doing, or do you have ombudsman? Is that, has that been contracted out too? Another issue I want to speak on is the lead in the water. I used to work for Pewcheck Station. A lot of people don't know that the water comes out of DeLair. Well, it's been contaminated for twenty-five years. Everybody knows that. Not only should the children have their fruits and vegetables washed off with that water, I don't care what kind of system you put on it, once that water touches flesh or anything else, it's contaminated. That's how bad the water is in Camden. So Flint ain't got nothing on us. You got educators that been dying from working at certain schools because of contaminants. And y'all know what school I'm talking about, I'm talking about E C D C. You know its reports on the contaminants? The schools are messed up, and it seems like, just like the young lady said, where is the money at?
Thank you, Mr. Neal, your time is up.
How can you build a new uncommon school and not fix the public school system? Because it's sabotaged, corporate sabotaged by design.
Number eleven, Kevin Barfield.
Good evening. Lot of stuff was said today. I can appreciate the enthusiasm that the students showed about the media school, and, you know, I hope that that works out, as always, you know, Superintendent. I'm a parent, as always, was wishing for the best of our students. When I see our students traveling throughout these districts, especially my son playing basketball, you get to see these other schools and other facilities, you see the kind of quality education these students are getting, and I always wanted that for here in Camden. Question. Um, I asked about, before last month's meeting, about the Q-SAC report, access to that information. The other thing is about the budget. Even with the budget, I'm not seeing, um, I know that the, um, business administrator went over the, the, um, audit, but it was so, um, general, generic, that it should be a line item, and usually that Bowman and Bowman Audit Report, even if it's summarized, has always been a part of this budget, so I don't know why that's not being presented as far as a copy. Um, the other thing is, I see that you have on, as far as resolution, number eleven, uh, the Equity Plan, which is curious that we talked about that, since with all that's going on. I'd like to know, how can I get a copy of that, so I can read that information? Um, and I think the other part is, um, I would like, I see on this, um, family and community engagement, that it's this term, "Expansion Grant." I would like to know more information about that, because again, that's something that, um, would like to know, um, how is it that, that's working with the faith department? Other thing too, Superintendent, at the beginning of the year, was an article in reference to about the RAC. And that was something that was brung up through the commissioner, something that Newark took, uh, and got, uh, hearing, uh, decision from the Department of Education, and I know that that was a concern here in the district, that you said that we had it in the district. I haven't heard anything, haven't seen anybody in, in RAC and dealing with our school and needing improvement, any of those things. So here we is, at the end of the school year, and again, at the beginning of the school year, you were saying that, you know, we had RAC in our, in our district, there's nothing, no engagement or anything, no team, no nothing, that's came in, that I've seen, that showed that RAC is in our district, which is a violation of our waiver, right? State waiver. And finally, um, in reference to what the gentleman said, I don't care about the grading system, because we already, we already went to the grading system to go up higher, because it's not about the grading system, it's about the curriculum. Anybody knows that any school district throughout this state, especially suburban district, why we are so behind, is because of our curriculum. And if our curriculum is not online or imparting, it's not saying anything against what you're trying to do now, but just be real about it. When you're not prepared, it's because you don't have the curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield, your time is up.
Reading and writing is number one, and that's the only way our children are gonna get better, especially those many, because they need those reading and those writing skills to be able to do fifteen-hundred-word, six-hundred-word, uh, essay. Until we get that in play, we can sit here and play the game.
Thank, uh, number twelve, F.M. Ingram. Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're number fourteen.
Fourteen. Do you, do you want me to-
No, you're on, Mr. Ingram.
Okay.
Your turn.
F.M. Ingram, uh, Camden City resident, retired, uh, school administrator. Um, I'd like to commend the students first for, uh, all the points they, uh, brought out. It's something how you can bring out good points when you're given more than three minutes. So I'm wondering, when the adults are gonna be given more than three minutes? And we're not gonna be, uh, just allotted three minutes, because you can't, I couldn't even introduce myself, and how I was part of a team that helped build this school in three minutes. So I'll do my writing. But what brings me here tonight is I promised Dr. Gray and, and Dr. Whitey that I would come here and stand in support of them for the Release Time Program. I'm one hundred percent in support of that, and that just doesn't cover, uh, a Christian-based program. It covers in Philadelphia, Muslims are doing it, Jews are doing it, other people are doing it. So I don't want people to get the idea it covers a religious or a spiritual-based program, and they're taking money out of their own pockets to come here and ask to do something for our children. Let me tell you what just Dr. Whitey could get paid, if she went and was a consultant somewhere. You see the fees that people get, and I don't mean any disrespect, if anybody saw those park test results where someone was zero point zero, we need all the prayer we can get. We need prayer on the inside, we need prayer on the outside, we need all the prayer. So, I was very disappointed when I found out this woman came from, in the snow, over the Davis School, and she was promised a meeting. She was promised a meeting, I reviewed the tapes, and she never got a meeting, she was told to come here, and she has three minutes. And I think that, I don't think that's right. And I'm gonna end on one note here. I know a little bit about L I W, Lead in Water. I'm a Certified Educational Facilities Manager, the first this district had, one of the few African-Americans to be a Certified Educational Facility Manager. Still to this day, I hold that certification. And I was in the first hundred people that ever get it. And let me tell you, you have a moral, legal obligation to let the people know that you lease, because I reviewed the contracts, and it says on one of the pages, "Do you have any known hazardous in the building that you're leasing to, to mastery and to uncommon?" And it says, "No, that's not true. That's not true." And let me tell you, I'm telling you now you do, so the ball is in your court, Mr. State Superintendent, and I'm not gonna let it go. I'm gonna notify everybody. You have one of those schools you leasing to, they can't use the field because it's full of arsenic. And you have on there, "No, it's no unknown hazardous. That's not true, sir." And we will be talking. Have a good night, because I'm late for dinner. My wife is waiting to take me out.
Number thirteen, Sarah Jocelyn.
I'm Sarah Jocelyn. I came to speak to you tonight, uh, but first I would like to address the issue of Resolution eleven, which is the three-year comprehensive equity plan for twenty sixteen to nineteen. This plan, I would hope, would be presented to the public, made available to the public, um, and, and the progress annually would be reported to the public. I do note that you've only, uh, submitted the proposal here for, for two years, that might be a typo. I bring it to your attention. It says the plan for twenty, twenty sixteen and seventeen is approved. So please check for a typo in that, that would be on page ninety-three. The main purpose that I've come tonight, you know I'm an advocate for science literacy, especially through environmental education. We are coming up to Environmental Education Week in April, and I remind you that this is an important item to, to educate within our school at all grades. Um, I'm bringing you the statistics that are reported in Sustainable Cherry Hill this, this week, that there are a hundred and eighty students that are taking A.P., Environmental Science, in the Cherry Hill, um, East School, and I'm looking to see what is going on in Camden City. I saw that the Davis School is planning to do a Earth Day program. I did not see other things that may be something that's in the background, but it didn't come in this document here. So, uh, please encourage participation in environmental education, and in participation in community engagement for Earth Day and Arbor Day and the other environmental items that are coming up. It is critically important for students to be engaged. I appreciate that Central Office is, is participating in recycling, in single, um, single-stream recycling, but I'm wanting to see what's going on in the schools as well, engaging our children to take it home to their parents. This is an important item for Camden City. Thank you.
Number fourteen, Keith Benson.
Good evening. I haven't been here in a while. As a fact, the last time I was here, it was in September, and the reason why I haven't been here in so long is because I was assisting with the girls JV basketball team at Camden High School, and, you know, it takes some effort, so I, I had to be there. But then also, last time I was here, and this really bothered me a lot, and it really took me some time to, to, I guess, sort of, I guess simmered down and get my thoughts together regarding it. But the last time I was here, I was told that I blatantly misresented facts, meaning that I was up here lying. And I would like to tell you guys all this, I am not a man that plays games, especially when it comes to education, and I would never, ever come up here to lie to my neighbors and my fellow residents. Some of the claims, well, the claims that I said last time I was here was that, despite all schools' rights, not all the schools are treated equally. That's a fact. The last time I was here, I said there were vacant positions here in the schools. That's a fact. The last time I was here, I said young white people here were given advantages in hiring in downtown Central Office. That's a fact. So I would never come up here and just come up here and just lie. So the fact that the next month, it was stated that I blatantly misrepresented the facts, I had a problem with that. But if you want honesty, I will give you some more. Last month, Brother Brown here said to the Board of Education that the mayor did not appoint you all to sit there and be quiet. Now, in all the years I've been here since the state took over, the toughest question I've ever heard asked of Superintendent came from that student tonight, and that's a shame. But here's what we're learning from the Board of Education. We learn that you guys know how to be yes-men, we know that you guys know how to go along to get along, and we know how, we know that you guys know how to play the game. But my question to you guys is, where's the leader amongst you guys?
Over and everywhere.
You guys are here to suppose, you guys are here to represent the people. Now here's one thing I gotta let you guys know, that over the course of my doctoral studies, I'm almost finished my, my, my doc, my dissertation, so I'm getting my doctor in a couple of months. I've been able to go around the country, from Chicago to Charlotte, to just back now from San Diego. I've, I've spoken at Princeton, I've spoken at Penn this year. Camden is the most oppressive place my audiences have ever heard of. When I tell them that Camden is the only, is the only place in the entire state with a state-appointed superintendent, with a mayoral, a mayoral-appointed Board of Education, and under state takeover, and it's the only place in the district, I mean, the only place in the state with these, uh, parameters, their jaws drop, and these folks are professors. So, if we have no democracy out here, that leaves the responsibility on you guys up there. And for years, you guys have not done your part. Let's continue on. To the parents that send their kid to these Renaissance schools, the issue is not so much your, the schools you choose to send your kid. The problem with, the problem what's going on here-
Thank you, Mr. Benson, your time is up. Mr. Benson, your time is up. Mr. Benson, your time is up. If you have comments, address it to the Superintendent. Address your comments to the Superintendent, sir. Sir, your time is up. Number fifteen, Amir Khan.
Good evening. I, I want to change up a little bit based upon-
I, I wanna change up a little bit based upon what I heard from some of the student representatives today. First and foremost, I want to say that, um, when they're talking about the school, the transportation bill, I'm glad to hear that you guys are behind that. We've been trying to get that thing pushed through legislation for the past year and a half now. It's been so difficult dealing with some of the legislations. Matter of fact, Arthur Barclay just recently committed to try working on that himself as well. So I really believe there's an absolute correlation, of course, between the ease of getting the school and the grades. So I'm glad to hear that you guys are working behind that as well. One of the other things that, um, one of the young student representatives mentioned was about the creative arts and performing arts. You know, I'm so proud that this week, um, I'm going up to New York. My brother, who's in the theater, Tony Award winner, largest black theater company in the country, and Crossroads Theater Ricardo Khan, from Camden, from Camden, Tony Award winner, and this week, he's putting on a play in New York on Broadway called Fly, about the Tuskegee Airmen. So it's powerful cuz there's so much great talent here for the performing arts and creative arts here in Camden, and, and that's a great representative of it. And I'm, I'm be proud to go up there on Saturday at Broadway with a lot of other representatives from here from Camden. I do want to mention real quick, um, the COLA program that we are currently doing. Obviously, we know on Thanksgiving Day, Camden High beat Woodrow Wilson in football, but we now have a competition between the Camden High football team and the Woodrow Wilson football team. Academically, it's called the COLA program. Uh, the COLA program is the competition of life and the child, the student with the greatest GPA from this market period gets $500 scholarship. The student with the highest increase, um, in GPA this market period gets $500. And the team overall gets a trip over to Washington, DC and tours Washington. So that's some great things happening with the schools right now with Camden High and Woodrow Wilson. And the last thing would be the Boy Scouts. We're so glad that the Boy Scouts now are officially back here in Camden. We're getting a lot of students from the schools. We need as much support as we can for the Boy Scouts. Just so you know, the Boy Scouts who are back in town, um, Boy Scouts currently, 75% of all businesses, political and professional leaders are Boy Scouts. United States, 65% of all college graduates were Boy Scouts, 25% of all scouts develop a hobby, a vocational. If you're a Boy Scout, you get greater, um, um, points going into college or into, um, other four-year, four-year scholarships that are available for Boy Scouts. But I will say this about the Boy Scouts here in Camden, we approach them, we said it's difficult for parents to pay for the Boy Scout trips, pay for the registration, and pay for the uniforms. Boy Scout corporate, along with donations in the, uh, community, have waived all the fees for all the Boy Scouts from Camden that wanna sign up in Boy Scouts. Instead of wearing quote-unquote, they call corny uniforms, they're allowing the Boy Scouts from Camden to design their own uniforms. And, uh, we're excited because they're even paying for all the trips that the Boy Scouts will take. So thank you very much. We appreciate and solicit your prayers and support with the Boy Scouts here in Camden. Thank you.
Number 16, Nicole Goodman.
Okay, I'm staying on special education and special services. Because last month, I was here on the 23rd, and I clearly asked a question about the children in charter school, over 200, who are servicing them. Let me touch on our current administration in special services. Between, I'm gonna say probably in the last five months, I've heard the word directive used so much that it means absolutely nothing. I learned effective leadership, they don't need to use directive when they are competent in their job and they know what they're doing. The difference with this current and past regime in special services is that the current regime, they're imaginary. Our past regime, they were real, they were actual, they were tangible. We can reach out and touch them for guidance, for support, for problem-solving, for resolutions. Now we have a regime that'll send an email. If you ask a question, they'll send you an email with 15 links for you to go do the research yourself. We have a regime who thinks it's easier to uproot a child with two months left in school instead of removing a substitute teacher over at Cream School. Last month, I clearly asked, how could we pay Kristin Patterson-Moss, a person out of compliance, to bring the district into compliance? That was on the 23rd. Well, on February 24th, I received an email informing me to complete an evaluation that was already completed July of 2015. It clearly states in the code that you can't test a child more than once in the same school Just last week, I had students, um, tested by, with the access testing for proficiency, yet and still, the students did not receive ESL services all school year. That falls on compliance. And the email dated 2/29, and I wanna be clear why I'm stressing compliance, because there's no black and white in compliance. The, the state does not give us allowances to be out of compliance, either we're in or we're out. So in the email, it clearly stated that due to staffing issues, we have schools that are not receiving physical therapy services, even though it's in their IEP. We service private providers, that's the three and four-year-olds, the daycares and the Headstarts. They have not received PT all year. Unacceptable. But yet and still, we can provide a physical therapist to evaluate the child or to do an intake, but we can't provide a physical therapist to service the child? Maybe because we can bill with Medicaid for evaluations and intake? Concerns of fraudulent behavior, maybe? I don't know. An email went out from Kristin Moss about placement of students, which was inaccurate and incorrect. So let me be clear to the district as well as the department. The district nor does the department dictate placement of special education. It clearly states in a New Jersey administrat-
Thank you, Ms. Goodman, your time is up.
That's okay. It clearly states in a New Jersey administrative code, the responsibility for determining the placement of a student with disabilities remains the sole responsibility of the IEP team, including the campus. My concern with the IEP, that student should have never known what students had IEP. I'm happy she advocated for them, but my concern is, how did she know the students who were classified? That's a concern. The other concern I have-
Thank you, Ms. Goodman, your time is up.
The other concern I have is that we have been testing from March night all the way up until June 3rd, we're testing. Step far, max, in the ass step, that is three months. Where's the instructional time? And did we align the testing time to account for the 75% of district-wide SGO that mandated on the teacher? So I'm gonna deal with this. Dr. Marlon DeKing said injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Now, one of you are serving these children any justice. So when they talk about the PARC testing, I respect that gentleman, but when we have, uh, materials that are outdated, and we have Facebook and these other districts that have materials that 2015 aligned with the PARC testing, no, our children are not ready.
Number 17, Namibia L.
Good evening. My name is Namibia L. I'm a proud parent of Camden City Public Schools. Three girls, right over here. There was mentioned earlier, um, by one of the members about the connection between, uh, schools and community and that, um, applauding, uh, I guess, someone for coming to you, um, with an issue. I think it's, yes, it's important to have that school and community connection, um, but it's also important that the, um, community feels welcome and that the school actually goes around in the community and that, um, the community is a part of the planning process when it comes to, um, decision-making. That we're just not presented with a package to just digest, but we're actually part of, um, like I said, the planning process. Wanted to look at, um, I was at one of the meetings that you had with the merger between, um, MedEast and Hatch. And, um, as a, as also a former, uh, teacher at Hatch, um, I'm also concerned about the, the building, you know, there. That I wanted to know that with the monies, I guess, if you're saving from having the students move over, or, or if you have money that's, that's, that you're saving for having the kids move from MedEast to, from that, from that building to Hatch, if that money can be invested in, um, just revitalizing the infrastructure of the school. There has been a number of issues back in September 2013, the school was closed for two weeks, um, because of environmental issues, you know? And, um, also, we had a number of, of, of staff members, a former, um, school board member, um, that was a teacher there, she passed away. Just recently, we had a, um, uh, the former custodian, uh, uh, two weeks ago, he, he passed away, and a couple of the teachers passed away. Um, I think it needed to be looked at as far, cuz it is an older building, um, by certified staff, certified people who are, um, certified with environmental, um, cleaning issues, not just the custodians, because they're not certified in that, you know, as Mr. Ingram has, uh, mentioned earlier, to really look at that building, um, uh, as far as environmental issues. Also, um, when I went back to the community and, and, and school connection, and, um, we wanna look at have your hiring practices as far as having teachers that come from Camden City, um, and teachers that, um, reflect our students, um, more black and Latino teachers, having, retaining the ones that are there and hiring more. And also in administration, um, the student that spoke here, Joshua Sims, uh, and Arnetta Johnson are also products of, of, of teachers who are from Camden, you know? So, um-
Thank you, Ms. L, your time is up.
Thank you.
Number 18, Sean Brown.
Um, I wanna start by just giving a really brief, uh, comment on PARC, which is my recommendation for students is that you take it, do your best, and know its flaws. Take the test, do the, your absolute best on the test, but also be aware that with most standardized tests, including PARC, and maybe especially PARC, that it has major flaws and that it does not assess the full breadth of knowledge that you have as a student. I would also, um, with what Department of Education right now is doing with graduation requirements and how they've kind of moved the goalposts in the state of New Jersey, um, I think it's just really incredibly important for students to take the test and take it seriously. Um, second, on a positive note, I wanna thank Sheree and Elon, who work in the school district, for, um, doing their best to address the issues that we have in our district with violence, with positive behavior, um, community partnerships being, uh, being created, being facilitated, being nurtured, being trained. These are all really important things for us to get closer to having a safer community, and it's good to have people, multiple people in the district that are easy to get in contact with and are, and are out there. Third, uh, I wanna say to Mr., uh, through, through the superintendent, but to Ms., to Ms. McCombs directly, um, as this, as the steps are being taken to address the science and social studies curriculum, I wanna remind you that in the last few months, I've been asked a lot about the primary, the election that we're in right now. What's the different, simple questions? What's the difference between a Democrat and a Republican? What is, how do I vote? What's the difference between a primary and a general election? Uh, I've, I've spoken at a few schools, and at these schools, I say, do you take American federal government? The only school that I know, um, that teaches at least a portion of that is, is MedEast, cuz I have an intern there, so it's easy for me to know what they teach there. Um, but as we look at the curri, at the curriculum, again, as I said, the, the community has now an opportunity to participate, so I implore the district, just as you, uh, the superintendent proved tonight for, uh, CTE, that before that curriculum is finalized, before it's signed off on, before it's presented to the community, show the rough draft to the community, let us give our impact, uh, so that you can hear stories of ways to incorporate black and Latino history, to understand the relationships between countries like the United States and Cuba, where our president is right now. So I would, I know I'll get a response to that, and I'll talk to Ms. McCombs afterwards. And then just lastly, I wanna say, uh, to Brother, Brother Muhammad especially, but to all the advisory board members, that, um, um, after my comments last month, I had an opportunity to talk to some of you about it, and, um, I felt like I was heard, my point was made clear. I think Keith Benson reiterated some of those points tonight, and I heard from you as well. With that said, I wanna thank Ms. Atwood for advocating for gifted and talented program. I think that's a great example of exactly what you as advisory board members should do. Um, and I'll talk about, a little bit more about GNT during the budget a little bit later. Thank you.
Number 19, Janelle McCray.
Number 20, Kelly Francis.
All right, so that ends public comment.
All right, a few responses to the select questions and issues that came up. I don't think Mr. Delgado's still here, but we, if he were, I would tell him that we just hired a new, uh, director of CTE, Mr. Al Dyer. And I know that he's been meeting with Woodrow Wilson to talk through what the CTE offering is, as Mr. Delgado's advocating for a trade school at Woodrow Wilson High School, and so we'll just set that up separately. Yes? So I was gonna say, on 28th and Mickel, I was gonna do my next comment, uh, I mean, he's advocating directly to the police department. I know he's got some close relationships there, so I appreciate you doing that as well. Uh, Mr. Davis, as far as what is the city doing about drinking water at home, if he's still here, I, I would love just to hear from him, his thoughts, just to better understand some of the challenges. I certainly agree that we, we have them here in Camden. As far as his claim that the flushers in some schools are not working, uh, we, we test our flushing system quarterly, and when they're not working, we address the problem, uh, as they come up. So if he has any specific evidence that some of our flushers aren't working, please just let us know. Give us the name of the school, and we'll, we'll respond as soon as we get the information. But we do test the flushing system quarterly.
Yep. Mr. Davis, let's, let's set up, let's set up, I don't, I don't doubt you, let's set up a separate time to go through it.
This is your report. This comes from the school district. Don't say that I make a statement that I cannot sustain. This comes from your-
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say you couldn't sustain it. I said, share the information with us. I didn't, I didn't, I, I wasn't disagreeing with you.
You kidding that man back there? He's lying to me. Go to the mic. You think I come up here and say something that ain't so?
That's not what I said.
This is an open request. These are your documents. And it says it right on here.
I wasn't disagreeing with you for the third time.
I'm gonna turn it up on you.
I, I wanna hear more from you, and I think we should do that as a follow-up tomorrow even, okay?
Follow-up to what?
Maybe even we'll, we'll find some time to meet tomorrow. I wanna hear more from you on this. That's all I'm saying.
Ms. Vida, so, uh, the buses that are showing up late, I, I recently met a student, or I should say a parent, who was with her student, who told us about buses showing up late. And the minute we knew the student's name, we could call, uh, the county and resolve that, uh, issue fairly quickly. So there are some bus routes that are late, I've heard stories. And in the same spirit, uh, give us the student's names or the routes or where they're happening, and we can try and follow up on those. But, uh, when they do, I mean, I, we certainly agree with you, it's inexcusable, makes no sense for buses to be picking up kids at 8:15, which is what was happening in this one instance. Um, so please do share that specific information with us. That's, that's inexcusable. So please do let us know, we can take this offline, let us know the student, if we can follow up with him or her, and we'll raise it with the busing commission. Your point about Aramark concession stand, so here's, here's kind of the backdrop on this, and you're not the first person that's come to me citing this concern. The backdrop here is that there were some inefficiencies, and we wanted to normalize the way we were conducting concessions across all schools. So Aramark picks up the cost of the overhead, and they give, uh, a percentage of their- So Aramark picks up the cost of the overhead, and they give a percentage of their revenue and put it into the Student Activity Fund in the same way if a school were to do it itself, and put the money into a PTO fund or a Student Activity Fund. I think it's worth a bigger conversation. If this is like a big thing, and I've had a number of people come up to me now, happy to explore alternative solutions. I think Aramark's been a good partner to date, and again, they are putting a percentage of the revenue into the Student Activity Funds. They're covering the overhead too, so, yeah. Of the issues we disagree on, we don't need this to be one of them. So let's talk through this. I've heard some of the basketball coaches complain about this as well. It's come from a few different sources. Aramark's been a good partner here, open to exploring some alternatives. Thank you for your feedback, Ms. Vida. Mr. Barfield, the equity plan, you want to copy? And Ms. Jocelyn, you mentioned it as well. We will give you both a copy of the equity plan.
That's after April 1st, once it's submitted, you'll get a copy. You get a copy of that too. Just make a request, and we'll send you one.
The RAC, so same answer as before, Mr. Barfield, on the RAC. We are fulfilling the requirements in the ESEA waiver. It doesn't make sense to have the fully-blown RAC team here now that we have our team. So we are obviously working very closely with the state, with the director of all RACs, and we are meeting the requirements that are in the ESEA waiver. You know, one of the challenges I found when I first came in here, kind of during the 100-day listening tour, is we had the RAC team, we had the state intervention team, and then we had the existing district team, and then there was me. And you had basically three different entities that were pushing the same information into schools, not the same, they're kind of inconsistent actually in the way that they were pushing information into schools, and it was dizzying and confusing for educators and principals. So we tried to streamline that process, which is why it looks different today than it did before my appointment. But we are fulfilling the requirements in the ESEA waiver. Sure, we're doing that. No, and Ms. McCombs can comment on that. We are working with the director of RAC statewide, and we, to develop the school improvement plan. So I don't know, Ms. McCombs, do you want to comment on that?
Absolutely. And Mr. Barfield, we can talk more about it in detail afterwards, but we do, it may look different than it did originally when the RAC came into the district, but we do through our, specifically through our chief operating officer on school support, Ms. Wales Wilson, she works with me to make sure that we are in compliance, and that we are also working strategically with RAC to make sure that what RAC is requiring, that it's aligning, and we're all moving in the same direction. So it's not so hodgepodge, but she is required, she just went to a meeting in Trenton last week for a full day, so she's a part of the RAC meeting. She gets the information from Ms. Paula White from DOE with RAC, and that information comes back. Our principals have been given specific guidance on writing their school improvement plans for the upcoming year. So it does look different. I hear where you're coming from, but we are implementing, yes.
Mr. Barfield, we're happy to share it out. We're not holding on to it because we're hiding something. There are so many different compliance-oriented documents that we are more than happy to share out with everyone. Fact of the matter is, when we proactively and voluntarily put them out there, not everyone has the same appetite to digest them as you do. So more than happy to share with you, more than happy to share with the school communities, we're not hiding anything.
Yeah, and I just want to add, Mr. Barfield, the CAFR and the AMR will be loaded tomorrow on the state's website for review, and to be accessible after tonight's board meeting.
Ms. Jocelyn, so we're going to get you the comprehensive equity plan in April. Your science literacy advocacy work, we appreciate. You asked what are we doing on environmental education. Just a couple items that come to mind, we had the canoe mobile trip, which is becoming an annual thing to explore the waterfront, and our schools in North Camden participate in that. We have a number of different activities on Earth Day, I can share with you a list. So we do have some initiatives underway. Pastor Khan, thank you for the work you are doing with Boy Scouts. We have been in active dialogue with Pastor Khan and Mr. Benson Senior to open up those opportunities for our young boys here, and we really appreciate that. Ms. L. with Hatch and the environmental issues, so this is obviously before my time, but I do understand that in 2013, there was a pretty comprehensive assessment of the building. It was closed for a few days to do that, and the cleaning and testing was overseen by the county health department. I think to the extent families want to do like a full visit, to walk through the Hatch building and ask questions, I know our facilities team, Steve Nicoletti and others, would be happy to do that type of guided tour, and just make sure that you are asking questions and looking at every nook and cranny in the building. But certainly, we wouldn't be proposing this move if we didn't believe the building was in good enough shape. Okay. So that concludes my response. I don't know if any of our board members want to say something. Oh, sorry, Gary. I totally overlooked that. So we have started to share some guidance out to our school leaders. I'll let Ms. McCombs take, to respond, and I'll follow up with some additional thoughts.
Absolutely. So Mr. Frazier, you asked a few different questions. One of them echoed the student representative's concerns that they're not ready for Park, and what are we doing to help to make sure our students are prepared? And I'll just reiterate that we are expecting our school leaders, as they are checking lesson plans, as they are giving feedback, we're holding them accountable through their evaluations to make sure that not only Park aligned, but everything that they're teaching and standards aligned, so that our students are able to be equipped and prepared. And as I mentioned before, there are specific test strategies that are also being passed on, so that our students can get that information from teachers. And I can share more with you one-on-one afterwards, so we can have a healthier and heartier conversation about it. You also asked questions regarding what we will do to support refusal for students who do not want to take the Park assessment. We do have specific guidance that is in place, and I can share that with you as well. That has been shared with school leaders. School leaders have been given that guidance information, and have been given the directive to share that information in staff meetings, in student meetings, so that everyone who's a stakeholder is aware of what that refusal guidance is. So that is, that is something that is prepared and is being communicated. And you did mention that Washington Township has opted out of Park. And I just want to say there, and we can, again, have a conversation afterwards, because I know the hour is getting late, but I do want to just raise that the students in Washington Township may have other resources and may have other things that they can have at their disposal that will give them the opportunity to prepare for PSATs, ACTs, SATs. But we just want to, and I'm just reiterating, afford our students every opportunity to be able to have practice experiences with different types of standardized tests. Because I know that when I was at Camden High, I did not do as well on SAT as I would like to have, because I didn't have those supports. And I've been sharing that with students as we move around, but I did the best that I could, and that's what we all do. So I'm just saying that when we're thinking about and sharing information about what other districts are doing, we need to really think about what we want to offer our students and empower them to make choices that will help them as well. Yes.
Gary, we have a philosophical disagreement on this, and I don't think we should go back and forth all night. I think it's unfortunate that you would say that our students aren't prepared for this test. I completely disagree. Our students are increasingly better prepared for this test, and I think it's a test that, like Mr. Brown said, it's not perfect. I don't think any test is, and no one test defines who we are as a district, defines any student in terms of success or lack thereof. What a test does is it gives us rich information to understand where there are certain deficiencies, and where are the areas that we see things moving in the right direction. It supports us as educators, as policymakers, and if kids aren't taking the test, then we're not going to know. And in a district that's been long, long neglected, in a district where not all of our students have been served to their fullest potential, we need that information. We need that information, and I think it would be a disservice if we're all actively encouraging our kids not to take that test. So we have a philosophical disagreement on this, and I think what's important throughout this discussion is to use the facts. When you say we're dangling funding over kids, that's not true. We're not, we're not. Well, you're not seeing that from us. For us, we're stressing the point that this is not a high-stakes test. Kids, we're not making promotion decisions based upon whether a kid passes or doesn't pass it. This is rich information for us to support kids, and also, it is good experience for the students in taking an assessment, starting in the third grade, that's aligned to the SAT. The PSAT could provide scholarship opportunities for our kids. The SAT is obviously an assessment of choice for a lot of colleges and universities, and we don't put a lot of stock into it in terms of an evaluation of teacher perspective either, which is another common misnomer. Less than 15% of our teachers, Park even plays a role in their evaluation, and for those teachers, it's 10% of their overall valuation. This is only good information to support our kids, and we're going to make it an expectation for kids to take it. If they refuse to take it, we're going to welcome them to sit behind a computer and give them that opportunity. We're not going to click the mouse for them, we're not going to push any buttons for them. That is ultimately a choice they make with their parents, but we're going to actively encourage them to take it, because testing is a way of life inside of our schools. I took the Iowa test when I was growing up in Tennessee, I know all of our board members took similar tests. We think it's an important test, a good test. It's not a perfect test, we're not claiming it's a perfect test. Any other comments from board members?
As a board member, to sit here, and every month, it seems like we just keep regurgitating the same things over and over, from one month to the next, dealing with it, coming from the audience. When we started this process, talking with the mayor and the superintendent, and the superintendent's staff, we were coming together to work as a partnership. We have to communicate, we have to trust one another, and we have to work together. And that's not just us as a board, as an advisory board, that's us working with the superintendent and his staff. Ms. Blackshear made the decision, and I respected what she did. The one thing that the boards did was we dealt with policies, and we made sure that we had committees. Through those committees, we had information, and the information that a lot of you have come to this podium tonight, looking for and asking for, we're doing the same thing. We're doing the same thing. Things that you have asked for in this audience tonight, some of it in the back room, board members have asked for the same things. And sometimes we're being told, no. I don't expect no to be an answer when it comes to information for our children, for our parents, for our schools, for our community. Because in order for all of us to get this done properly, we must unite and work together. There is no other way of doing this. We have come together, we've gotten information, and I can see information that from a point that even from the parent piece, I look at it, and this is the one area that I feel the most disrespect has been given to the parents in this district. There's information that you're entitled to, that you're not getting all the time, there's information that you're entitled to, Title I, information and laws and regulations that you should be entitled to, to advocate on behalf of your children. That's the law. FACE is here, family and community engagement. I don't have a problem with them, I don't have a problem working with them, but we cannot take what is parental involvement and what we're entitled to for information for all of our children, because it doesn't matter whether you're a public school, Catholic school, charter school, or a KIPP Academy, a Renaissance school. This is on behalf of our children, and what we have to deal with is policy and law. That's what our responsibility is. And if we're not dealing with it that way, it's not going to happen, it's not going to turn around. So I'm saying to you, there is information that we are entitled to as a board, and I asked for it, and I hope that we're going to get it without a problem, because the very things that parents are asking for, I can say to you that they have every right, that if they're not getting it, you go to the county superintendent, and then you go to the state, to the administrative law offices, and you talk about the barriers that are put in your way that is stopping you from getting what your children need. Now, I'm saying to you that I don't think that you don't want to give us the information all the time. I think it's a matter of, pay mind, you have an office staff, and they have a responsibility to take care of things for you, and I understand that. We, as a board, in the community's eyes, we still have a responsibility for information that is entitled to get out to our children, to our children, and to our parents. If that's not happening, it may not agree that you want to continue to do it the way that we were doing it, but we were doing it, and information was getting out, even down to our TV station. The people in the community, that TV station was put in place so that information could be given to the community. Everybody can get to school because parents work, or they have other things, but our programs, Park, we talked about Park. We had teachers who came in and gave the information to whom, whatever programs it was in the school district, we made sure that through the parental involvement, through the district parent advisory council and bilingual councils, that we made sure that they got that information from people from the state, or whomever we needed to do that training for them. That's the level of information that you're entitled to. The local, the state, and the federal, and that's what you're entitled to. And until we start working as a unit, because it's there, they're waiting for us to do our jobs. Now, I'm not talking about our staff, because I know our staff has been working with us, I know what they're trying to do, but I'm saying to you that we are not uniting together as we should in order to get it done. I think that we all have the same thing, we want to move forward. We want to move forward, but we've got to find a way to trust one another, work together, communicate to get that done. And if we don't do that, we're doing a disservice to our children in this district. We've talked about the parental involvement, bilingual, special needs, gifted and talented, the parent university, all of that should be falling under an umbrella. Also dealing with the career and technical institute. So what do we see? We see a family university coming out of the Crox Center under FACE. How is it that information and the things that we're putting in place and have been writing, that is there through the years? We're seeing it being done elsewhere. You've got to work as a team. I'm watching accounts, I'm watching account numbers, and I'm watching the funds that's funded through those accounts. Let's do what we know is right on behalf of our children. do what we know is right on behalf of our children. That's all I'm asking. Because if not, the parents took us to, took us to court once, and I would say to you, if there's barriers in front of your children for you to get what you're entitled to, then that's what you as parents are supposed to do. That's, that's, that's me, as a board member, a parent, and working here on behalf of you. I've been here since 97. I go for my trainings. I do what I'm supposed to do on behalf of. I want to see all of us to come together and do what we need on behalf of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
And, uh, thank you very much. Madam President and Vice President spoke well. I just wanted to say, on behalf of, um, the board members that I had the opportunity to serve with here, um, these are some great individuals. And a lot of people don't see a lot of things that you do. We have a lot of retired professionals here. We have, uh, businessmen and women up here. We have current professionals up here. And, um, a lot of times, we may not, rebel rouse, or as passionate as you are, um, about your issues, and you're definitely welcome to do that, but we do work. And I wanted to speak on behalf of them, just because some of us may not have that personality when we're here. In front of you, that you don't see what goes on. For instance, the committees that we started here with the district, I mean, here as advisory board members, with particularly talk about Mr. Bell, we're dealing with curriculums, with those solution-based that our young men and young women, who were students here, who said a lot tonight, spoke about. And we had great conversation about the curriculum, and what we want to do moving forward with the curriculum. These are all fights that we're in, that a lot of us don't see. And I'm not discouraging those who come to the board to continue to do what you're doing. But, um, the superintendent, Mr. Rohan Afer, can't speak, uh, for us. So we speaking for ourselves here. And I just want to commend those wonderful board members who I'm serving with, that I see the work that you do, continue to do it, in spite of. Also, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Sean Brown for coming up tonight, and, um, just showing the community what being a man is all about. We definitely appreciate that. Uh, we appreciate that issue there. And as well as, um, the last thing I wanted to say, I wanted to say this earlier about the, um, young man who spoke about, um, the music program, and I wish he was still here, because I wanted to say this to him. The last board we had, and I wanted to give him an idea, and I want to say it publicly, so he can go back and look at it. The last board meeting we had, he was kind of told, you know, he wanted to volunteer his time with younger students. And it sounded like some people was discouraging him away from that. Now, I'm with, um, government doing their part, and we pay taxes. But many of you know me in this room, that we have to stand up and do things for ourselves. And when we see young people being discouraged from doing something for self, we don't need to put in that old idea that got us in a lot of the things that we in our community today, discouraging us away from doing things for self, of doing things for ourselves. If you don't know how to do it, please visit us. And the Nation of Islam will teach you how to do for self. And when others see you doing things for self, they will come up and help you and assist you, because you're doing something and showing what you can do. So before we can say in the board that we don't do nothing, our actions, businessmen, retired professionals, current professionals here on the board, our actions show what we do. And just because we don't say anything, and you don't hear what we say, if you come to us, you'll, you'll pretty much get the, uh, idea of what we say. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I guess I would, thank you guys. Um, we, we as a board, I know we definitely appreciate the advocacy, and, you know, continue. It's your right. Um, and it's part of the accountability process, um, from the public to the local governing body and all the way up. And, um, you know, we are tireless workers behind the scenes. Um, you know, we're, every day, all day, when parents call us, families call us, we're right on it. You know, the administration can, you know, chuckle as many times as we, you know, bombard them with so many things that are going on. And, um, I think with the committee structures, I know with the committee structures, uh, we'll be able to, you know, it was all about the systems. Our system's very fragile for, and for a very long time. And so we had to spend a lot of time working on systems. And then now after, you know, after systems now, we start to deal with, um, processes, processes in the district. And so I think now with the committee structures, that will begin to allow us to be able to, you know, work more closely with implementation of those things regarding the different programs in the district. And so that's where we are now. And so I just want to say, you know, thank you for, you know, your honesty, um, your differences, um, and your advocacy. And, um, you know, you're always more than welcome to come to, you know, reach out to any one of us. Um, and I've heard that how some of you have been collaborating with the administration, and you know, we appreciate you for that. So your work is not done unnoticed. We may not parade you up here, but we do know, um, you know what's going on out there. So thank you.
All right. And so before we do a motion to close, I just want to tell the public that immediately after this meeting is adjourned, five minutes later, we will have our budget meeting. So, uh, we do have, um, budgets in the back, if you want to get a copy. But so right after this meeting's adjourned, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we will start our budget meeting.
At this time, I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Is there a second? Motion to adjourn the meeting was made by Ms. Atwood and Minister Wasim Muhammad. All in favor of the adjourn, the meeting say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. The meeting is now adjourned.
The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with, in that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least 48 hours in advance. On March 18th, 2016, notice was mailed to Coria Post in the Aldea. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board located by the reception desk at the central office and all school buil-, school building bulletin boards within the district. Um, Board Secretary, can you please call a row?
At this time, I'll do row call. Ms. Teresa Atwood.
Here.
Mr. Jose Brito Bueno is not here. Ms. Dorothy Burley.
Here.
Mr. Joshua Cole.
Here.
Ms. Tayisha Minir.
I'm here.
Here.
Minister Masim, Wasim Muhammad. Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton.
Here.
Mrs. Martha Wilson.
Yes.
And Ms. Catherine Blackshear.
Here.
We have a call.
The security.
I'll be with you two months in a row.
Okay.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So for members of the public, we're about to enter our, um, budget hearing. Uh, there will be public comments, so please sign up with Sharla if you want to make any comments. Also, there's copies of the budget, uh, in the back, if you want a copy of the budget.
All right. So we'll come down like we did for the earlier presentation. All right. So, thank you to all of you who are powering through here and staying for the budget portion. Uh, so we are proposing a balanced budget for next year, and this conversation about the budget certainly won't end here tonight, and we will continue the dialogue, uh, through the spring. Uh, this budget, uh, is the byproduct of a lot of careful planning and continued careful planning heading in through the spring, ensures that we have, uh, the resources we need to meet our students' needs. And, you know, that is the fundamental charge here, to build a budget aligned to our students' needs. And so while there's certainly a lot of conversation, uh, throughout the city, throughout the district, about the role of Renaissance Schools and Charter Schools, the fact of the matter is, uh, a very substantial number of our students will continue to be served in district schools. And we need to work diligently to ensure that they have the resources they need, and our staff have the resources to serve those students. So just to jump right into it, um, our, our budget, as we've been discussing in years past, is, uh, driven by the, by the number of students that we're serving. And, uh, you know, when, when I first came in, roughly 25% of students were already in Charter Schools. But the budget was really, uh, the $72 million shortfall you see here for the 14, 15 school year was, uh, a function of one-time monies being used to offset, uh, a loss of recurring revenues because of choices families were making. And so that was a very difficult budget year. And then last year, in 1516, we had roughly a $50 million revenue shortfall that, in which we were relying less heavily on one-time money. And, uh, was a budget that ultimately, uh, only 31 teachers were impacted in a, in a reduction in force. Uh, and so, uh, this year, we are proposing a budget that involves a $30 million revenue shortfall. So for those of you that have been coming to our meetings regularly, what we said last year, for those that always ask the question of what does this mean for the future of the school district, are we going to continue to see challenges like we did the last two years? What I said then is what I'm telling you now, is the challenge is less severe, the revenue shortfall is smaller, and the measures to offset the revenue shortfall, I believe, are far more doable. And that fundamentally, for every student that we're serving, we're going to have the resources to be able to serve those students. So this represents the overall revenue in the budget for 1617 compared to the budget presented in 1516. Uh, so, at a high level, there are a lot of numbers here. I would point you to the fact that this year's total revenue is up 6.6%. Uh, and so this does not include the revenues that, in which we're effectively a pass-through and go on to Charter and Renaissance Schools. Uh, but nonetheless, the number is up 6.6%. And that's driven by, um, by miscellaneous one-time revenue. So for example, we are anticipating selling our building, as we've been discussing for a while now, and that will generate revenue. Um, we are, uh, we have shared service agreements with our Renaissance Schools. And in those shared service agreements, we get paid by them to provide those services. That generates revenue. That's actually recurring revenue, not one-time revenue. We are projecting additional current savings, um, from the spending freeze we implemented earlier, and that, uh, presents some additional, uh, funds. So overall, uh, our, uh, revenue is up 6.6%. And we'll get into what, what that means for the district here in a moment. So in terms of the $39 million revenue shortfall, this is the way that we've, uh, shared the numbers in the past, in terms of how we got to this. So, on the far left side is the money that we budgeted to use in the fund balance, uh, for this year, and that was $9 million. So when you use $9 million of one-time money, that, uh, creates a structural gap, because that's one-time money that you don't have again this year. So that's, that's just the starting point. And to go back again to the 1415 budget, which is the budget that I literally walked into, um, we used $52 million of one-time money in that budget, $52 million of one-time money. So we are reducing, uh, our, our, our need for one-time money, uh, as evidenced by last year's budget. In addition to that, uh, for this year, uh, for increased Renaissance and Charter School payments, that's an incremental $16 million that we're projecting based on the trends that we see and, and families, uh, making those choices to enroll their students in other, uh, schools here in Camden. And then, lastly, there is a $14 million adjustment, uh, which, you know, I would think about this, uh, a few different ways, but probably most prominently, this includes the scheduled raises in benefits that we owe the vast majority of our staff here. The scheduled raises and benefits, uh, and so the CEA contract obviously calls for, uh, increased, uh, salaries as per the, uh, agreed-upon salary guides. This also includes some items that were unbudgeted or underbudgeted in 1516. Uh, and it also includes some reductions in federal revenue. And so in total, you get to a $39 million revenue shortfall. And the fundamental driver, again, is that, uh, we are making these adjustments to align our resources to the enrollment, uh, to the number of students that we are serving. So currently, we are serving, uh, approximately 8,200 students. And for next year, uh, our projections reflect approximately 7,200 students, a reduction in roughly, uh, 1,000 students. And, and in that time period, the projections reflect that Charter Schools will grow modestly at roughly 340 students, and Renaissance Schools would grow approximately 660 students. And I think this, in many respects, is the most important piece of information that I can share with you, because I think it's easy to look at the decline in enrollment and think that means less revenue, therefore, uh, we're in a world of hurt. And that's actually not accurate, uh, for a lot of different reasons. But, uh, not the least of which being, look at the way we are actually spending money and allocating resources on a per-student basis. Yes, we have a lot of work to make sure that we are implementing our initiatives with fidelity and, uh, training our teachers and the million other things we could talk about. But fundamentally, from a resource perspective, we are projecting this year's budget, the district will serve roughly 7,200 students, so roughly 50% of the teachers. But the total revenue allocated to the district is over 60%. So over 60% of the pot will go right here, to the district, even though the enrollment is 48%. So we take a lion's share of the revenue. And on a per-student basis, we are spending $25,000, is what we're proposing to spend in next year's budget, whereas Renaissance Schools are spending $17,000, and Charter Schools, uh, a little bit under $13,000. Uh, so the per-student spending is what I believe is the most prominent factor to look into. And if you compare us to last year, last year, or this current budget, I should say, we are spending approximately $23,000 per student. And next year, we're spending again $25,000, and that represents a nine percentage point increase. And if you go back to 1415, it, there's an increase year over year as well. We couldn't find apples-to-apples data, and so we're only showing you the last two years. But in my mind, in three consecutive years, we are increasing our per-people spending. So the core principle here being, and I think this goes without saying, but nonetheless important to stress, that we are protecting resources going to the classroom. So that means implementing financial controls to reduce waste, reduce overhead and find efficiencies, so the majority of each dollar goes to the classroom, and find non-personnel savings before impacting personnel. Find non-personnel savings before we impact personnel, especially at the school level. So how are we going about addressing the $39 million revenue shortfall? Well, given our increase of one-time revenues, and as I mentioned, that's coming from a few different sources, we are proposing to spend $14 million of one-time money, effectively our fund balance, to offset some of the gap. Now, we spent, we budgeted $9 million last year, so we're actually budgeting a little bit more this year. And I want to call that out, because that means that we have that structural deficit heading into next year. Uh, but I do think that it's an important measure, uh, to mitigate our revenue shortfall with these additional resources. Um, and, and certainly, it still represents a significant decline in terms of depending upon one-time monies since the 1314 budget. And when you look at central office and school-based, we are budgeting approximately $9 million in central office cost savings, uh, roughly 50/50 split in personnel and non-personnel. And at the school level, roughly $17 million in savings. Now, uh, I'll get to this in a moment. Attrition plays a big role here. So when you look at personnel savings, it's not to say that, uh, you're going to see $4 million of impact to actual people. Where we have retirements, where we have vacancies and other separations, we can close those vacancies. And, uh, and rather than impact an actual person who's working with the district. So just to go through each of these very briefly, uh, with the non-personnel expenditures, uh, this, this reflects, um, uh, sorry, my, the font here is very small. So we achieve this by taking a very hard look at, uh, all the areas in the district, starting first at the central office. And so this represents a number of different non-personnel, uh, reductions. Uh, but, I mean, think about this in terms of various vendors and consultants that we use, uh, that we can, uh, convert to serve our students on a, uh, on a more variable basis. So, uh, taking fixed costs and, and converting them to variable costs. Um, the 1415, for, we, we, we streamlined certainly the central office in 1415. And as you all know, we reduced the size of the central office by approximately 40 to 50%. And so, you know, we want to continue to make sure that we're going to prioritize non-personnel cuts of the central office, and to the extent necessary, personnel cuts as well, because we, to the extent we make cuts of the central we, to the extent we make cuts in the central office, it offsets cuts at the school level. At the school level, we are projecting $4.2 million in non-personnel reductions and $12.7 million in personnel reductions. So, you know, in spite of the many steps that we've taken, starting with the central office, starting with non-personnel reductions, with our expected enrollment shift, we also need to realign resources at the school level. And so I'll reiterate again, on a per-student basis, we are spending 9% more than last year, at roughly $25,000 per people. And so we will maintain the investments in instructional quality while keeping those reductions in line with enrollment declines. But this doesn't mean that we're not investing in our schools. It does not mean that we are not investing in our schools, and it does not mean that the central office, we're just going to willy-nilly make cuts that would affect our ability to serve our students at the highest level. So I want to point out a few areas that are investment priorities for us, in spite of the revenue shortfall, because there is still substantial revenue on a per-student basis. We have heard a great deal of feedback on what the various needs inside of our schools are for the past two and a half years. And so maintaining class sizes at or under state-recommended limits, appropriately deploying special ed and bilingual teachers according to our students' needs, as dictated in their IP, investing in staffing in order to protect and create common planning time for teachers. I'm going to get to that in a moment, some new staffing priorities for next year. And then staffing schools based on their unique needs. The needs at MedEast are not the same as the needs at HP Wilson. And so some of the staffing needs that I want to highlight, and this is directly driven by conversations with our teacher roundtable, with our principals, with our families, with our student board members, our board members, we are going to invest in reading interventionists. So interventionists that pull out our students that are really struggling in the classroom, where the data shows that they are not seeing any progress, students that are significantly behind in terms of grade levels and literacy and math. And so we want to hire some devoted reading interventionists, because what we're seeing is those students, again, are not progressing at the rate we'd like them to, and we think they need more individualized support and instruction. We are investing in operations managers. So the idea behind an operations manager, I mean, this is really driven by what we see with our principals, where they are, in many respects, the managers of their building and dealing with all the different issues that come up, and they often don't have as much time as we would like for them to have, and they would like for them to have, in terms of being the instructional leaders and the instructional backbone of their schools. And so with an operations manager, we take a lot of the operational-related work, the logistical work, the tactical work, off of their plate. And the operations manager would better support the clerks, the community school coordinator, et cetera, other staff there, to do a lot of the blocking and tackling for the principal. We are also moving forward with our investments in Camden High School, with the dual academies, because by creating smaller learning environments at Camden High School, that costs additional overhead. We need more administrators, we need more back-office support. Yes, there are some economies of scale there that you can have, but at the end of the day, you have to make some additional investments and hire some more people. And so also providing some flexibility at Woodrow Wilson High School toward that same objective, in terms of providing small learning environments. And also, lastly, I should have, I shouldn't have said community school coordinators, because what we're proposing here is to really kind of soup up the role and create family and operations coordinators that allow us to kind of take that role and take that effort to the next level, to ensure that our schools have the support they need to engage their families and to, again, create that operational capacity. So these are the examples, again, in terms of our investments that we're making with reading interventionists, operations managers, and the dual academies at Camden High. And we're pleased to be able to share this out, because even though, again, the revenues are declining, our ability in terms of our spending on a per-student basis allows us to make these additional investments in our schools. So I know when everyone hears about the budget, they immediately think about, well, what's happening to personnel? And I don't want to avoid that conversation. And one way to present this to you all is that, in our current budget, 76.3% of the total dollars spent are going to personnel. In this budget that we're proposing, 77.4% is being devoted to personnel. So it's actually slightly increasing. So we're not just cutting personnel to close our budget gap. And so I just wanted to make that point clear, that while making responsible cuts, we're absolutely able to ensure that the share of our funding that goes towards the resources, our most valuable resources, our staff, are relative to prior years and actually slightly So in terms of the preliminary school-by-school position impact, I'm going to walk you through some projected numbers in a moment. And I want to again stress, last year as the model to think about, in terms of how this year could play out. So last year, by more proactively projecting attrition, we were able to limit the number of teachers that were impacted in a seniority-based reduction in force. And that number, again, was 31. So on average, about one for every school, a little bit more than one. And so over the next several weeks, the district will, again, go through that work to gain clarity into the projected attrition, and we're going to consider a number of different factors: retirement resignations, staff who elect and are hired to stay with their students at new Renaissance partner schools, performance-based non-renewals, and staff who are hired for new positions within the district. Because all of those types of movements and decisions allow us to more strategically address the revenue shortfall. So I'm going to show you all a range here in terms of the potential impact, because I know this is the question that always gets asked. And so the range here is based upon what you could call a worst-case scenario, where there's very little attrition, and a best-case scenario where there's very high attrition. So the range would be zero to 85, with the two, low-moderate and high-moderate attrition ranges being 35 to 60. And again, last year's number was 31, and I would think about this year's budget in a very similar light to last year. But this represents, this represents the range of potential outcomes. And I know the next question tends to be, well, when are you making these decisions? And when will folks be notified? Well, first of all, we released our staffing survey back in February. We did the same thing for our central office staff, just to make sure we know where, what interest levels our teachers have in terms of where they would like to be placed, and same with our central office staff. In May is when school-based staff will receive their position status, so it'll be by May 15th. In June is when staff will basically have until June 1st to request a transfer. So the matching process takes place between the 1st of the month and the 24th of June, and principals will provide final approval in conjunction with our efforts on June 24th. And then from July to August, school-based staff will receive their projected placement, so that'll happen by July 8th, and August 15th is the final date for staff placement changes arising due to other unforeseen types of issues. So I'm now going to welcome up Ms. Regina Robinson to go through a more detailed, line-by-line overview of the budget, and she'll focus on some of the highlight areas worth noting.
Thank you Superintendent Rohana Fard. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to walk you guys through the operating side of the budget. One of the things I want to just talk quickly about, superintendent mentioned that we delivered a balanced budget up 6.6% versus prior year, or our current fiscal year. So what that means, as I go through the operating side of the budget, is how those dollars are being appropriated or expended for the 1617 year. So as I go through the line items, and if you have any questions, if you can just save them to the end, I greatly appreciate it. Everybody, hopefully by now, should have a copy of the advertised budget that was left in the back, that was submitted as part of the DOE requirements for the district. As I review the variances as how the budget was submitted, I will just highlight some of the bigger drivers and some of the causals of what's impacted and some of those variances that you see. So if I start with the first one, which is regular programs and instruction, we're down roughly at $800,000 versus prior year. And that's driven mainly through enrollment changes and just rightsizing or realigning our enrollment throughout the, based on changes in enrollment throughout the district. In addition to that, what's impacted in that $800,000 is efficiencies in how we order supplies and professional services. The next line in there I'm going to talk about is in before, before and after-school programs. If you can see, in prior years, there wasn't any budgeted line items in there for 1415 and 1516, there's 1.6 million in there. Again, that's rightsizing in how we've classified those dollars in the past, so we've called it out and said, hey, these dollars are specifically appropriated to before and after-school programs. Summer school dollars up for about $700,000. Again, that is rightsizing in how we currently spend our summer school dollars. So we wanted to make sure that the budgets were properly accounted for and aligned to how we are going to spend against those dollars. As I move on into support services, we'll look at the instruction for tuition. So that one's down slightly, about $800,000. And the instruction for tuition includes what we spend in district for VOTAC, for state facilities. So it's all of our sending tuitions that we go, that goes out of district. And as you can see, year-over-year, it's relatively flat, except based on enrollment changes, we're slightly down about $800,000. Attendance and social work, is that a three or eight? It's 372,000. Again, that's the, I like to say, cost of doing business of what the district requires to have, you know, social workers in place to service our children. If you look at OTP and physical therapy, that's an increase of $1.6 million. If you look at how we budgeted that for 1516, the $850,000, and how we're actually spending that, the true need in OTPT services, especially when you get into SPED ed and stuff, says that we really should be spending $2.5 million versus the $850,000 that we originally budgeted in 1516. So again, that's just rightsizing and making sure we properly project what we're going to spend in 1617. Another line that I just want to touch on is the improvement of instructional services of the $1.3 million. That reflects pretty much a 24% decrease versus prior year, and it's roughly in line with the change in enrollment in district. General support services, general ed. I'm like Mr., the superintendent, the font on my slides here are really small. 5.6 million, 5.6 million increase in general support services. Again, it's strategic use of how we're going to spend additional funding that's come in district, whether it's through the building sale or some additional savings, and we're going to repurpose that to support services throughout the district. In addition to that, you'll see a decline in 7.7 million in employee benefits. That is driven mainly by a decline in staffing, tighter internal controls. We are working through contract negotiations with our service providers to get the best deal for benefits in district through our RFP process with our brokers to kind of go out and shop at markets, the best cost for benefits in district. So year-over-year, if you look at it, what we've spent in 2014, 2015, and how we're projecting 2016 and 17, it's, it's a number that's pretty aggressive, but based on how we've contracted those services, we are comfortable that we'll deliver and we'll manage to that savings that's noted there. Capital projects outlay, you have a net change or a net increase of $1.2 million. Included in that $1.2 million is a million-dollar reserve for maintenance that we have included in the budget. We have challenges within the buildings, so we just wanted to make sure that we have a buffer there to cover any emergencies that we would need for repairs throughout district on an emergency basis. If you look at the line items for the change in payments to charter and Renaissance schools, we've gone from 57.6 million in 1516 to 60, almost 61 million for charter schools, or a $3.3 million increase. And in Renaissance schools, a little over 11.5 million in Renaissance payments. And what you see in the last line, the general fund contribution to school base, is how much we allocate out of general fund to our schools. For preschool aid, preschool aid is up about $3.5 million. So overall, the base preschool funding has remained relatively flat. The $3.5 million increase that you see here for preschool aid is one-time carryover dollars that has driven up the additional or incremental dollars that you see for preschool aid. And I know Marquita is here, Marquita Burnett, who's the director of early childhood. Do you want to add anything with regards to that? No? Okay. I'll just keep moving. And again, the shut-off. I know. So non-public aid, again, relatively flat there with regards to how we're spending. Overall, total state projects is up with about $3.5 million. And again, it's pretty much driven by the net impact of preschool aid there that rolls up into the cumulative number of the 3.5 there, but everything else in non-public aid and adult basic aid is relatively flat. If you look at our spending on federal dollars, again, relatively flat with regards to how we spend the dollars in NCLB, with the exception of the IDA Part B handicap dollars, we have a roughly about an $800,000 decrease in that. And it's really due mainly to how we budget and forecast, I mean, budget our federal dollars. The guidelines from the state gives, says that we have to budget at least 85% of the budget, so the net change in that is roughly how the guidance is given for us to project So in total, total expenditures is 374.6 million. There is a transfer to, of special revenues, what is the dollars that we allocate from general fund to preschool, for a net total expenditures or appropriations of 372.5 million. And that aligns to the revenue that the superintendent presented, and thus resulting in how the budget was balanced on the revenue and appropriation side. As I go into the last couple of slides, it will give you more of a detail of how those appropriations were spent in the line items against each budget. So when you look at for SPED ed and the $17.6 million we get for out-of-district, I'm sorry, special education and the out-of-district placement, out of the 17.6, you can see 7.8 million of that goes to private schools for students, in-district students that go outside of district that are handicapped. We spend $2.6 million in state facilities. We spend another $3 million in vocational tech services throughout the district, which makes up 17.6 million that we go, that goes out the door to other service providers outside of the district. If we look at student transportation, student transportation slightly up to $11.3 million. The bulk of it is contracted services through the Camden County Educational Service Commission, who is our provider of our busing throughout the district. And we spend another $700,000 for aid and lieu transportation throughout the district. There's a slight half million here with regards to capital outlay that we've spent in custodial services and additional tech upgrades throughout the district. And our state aid funding, so state aid funding, we get a $280,000, $281 million from the state, which makes up about 85%, 85, 87% of the monies that the district gets from state aid. And it's state aid, and it's broken down into these categories. So eight and a half million from SPED Ed, we get security aid, transportation aid, and some other buckets mainly, mostly driven by the equalization aid of two hundred and sixteen million dollars. From federal grants, we got fifteen, or we will be getting fifteen point one million dollars. Again, those are the buckets. Three point two million from IDA Title I is seven and a half million, Title II is one point seven million, and some other dollars that rolls up into there. Again, all of that's based on current guidance to include eighty-five percent of the current years, current fiscal years funding in our budget projections. This breaks down the dollars that are contained for non-public aid of one point five million dollars. And again, we talked about the preschool aid for a total of thirty-six million in additional funding, either through preschool or non-public aid. And that is pretty much the end of the appropriation side of the budget. Again, three, three hundred and seventy-two point five million is how the budget was submitted and balanced between the revenues and appropriations. Any questions for either the superintendent or myself? That's where you should pay mine.
I didn't say it doesn't affect it, I said that the more, yeah, keep going. This one? Total revenue goes up, per student spending is actually going up.
Is going up?
Yeah. Total revenue goes down, per student spending goes slightly up. No, the money does follow the student. It's that Renaissance schools and charter schools are funded at a lower rate, and we have some additional one-time revenues this year on top of that fact. And that's how you get to twenty-five thousand dollars that we're spending for each student. So both things are true. So what you're saying is absolutely right in that when the enrollment goes down, there's less revenue. But remember, we have fewer students. And so when you have fewer students, you devote your resources to those fewer students. And on a per student basis, for the students that we will be, that we're projecting to serve, and you know, these projections are not a precise science, but they're typically pretty accurate, more or less, you know, give or take a little bit, we're going to be spending twenty-five thousand dollars for each of those students. That's been the case, correct. And that was the trend years before, you know, I was appointed to. But certainly in the last, since I've been here, three consecutive years of smaller enrollment in Camden, it kind of goes to our bigger conversations about the role of the district evolving and, right, you're nodding your head, okay. You're saying should the questions be asked during public commentary?
They have public comment, they have public, they're signed up for public commentary.
Okay, so why don't we do that? We'll respond to your questions once you go up. Yeah. I'm going to have someone on our team comment on that, because I can understand, like, I think this is a little confusing, me personally, I find this, yes. And a Renaissance school principal will tell you that they don't feel as though they get ninety-five percent. So, yeah, so there's, there's a little bit of complication here, and we'll try to explain it up on stage. Go ahead, looks like we're staying down here.
Will that be the coordinators, current coordinators being trained to take on those expectations, or will that be another set of coordinators being hired?
So right now, we are trying to think through the right path to go. The objective we're trying to solve for is that currently community school coordinators are not compensated appropriately. So as you know better than most, the starting salary is twenty-two thousand, and so this is a role that increases that salary substantially. So I think there's an open question for us in terms of how many of these new positions, do they take the place of the old position, or are we adding them on top of it? And, and so, you know, with the budget, even though we're submitting it, it's still a very fluid thing. Like, we, we can, we can still shape and form it as, as the needs arise. And so that is one that we look forward to continuing to discuss with you and others. In terms of what the requirements are? It goes back to the fluidity of it all. We don't have job descriptions yet, and that's something that we should talk about in terms of, we want to pay them more, we don't want to necessarily set the requirements such that our highest performing community school coordinators wouldn't even qualify. So I think these are all really good questions, and we should continue to talk through them. For special ed and ELL students? I don't know that number off the top of my head. We can run it for you, but by far and away, on a per pupil basis, we are spending substantially more on students with disabilities and English language learners. And so we, we can, we can pull that number, I'm pretty certain it's closer to thirty thousand, maybe even higher, depending upon the students' needs. All right, let's go back up on stage.
Yeah, we're going to move back upstairs and do the.
Yeah, yeah, you'll, you'll come up. Well, we'll get you, we'll get you guys copies of this.
Okay, because that's the point. I want to say too, I'm superintendent, is that something like this, that there's so much information overwhelming, that when we get these reports, all we see is basically line items. It doesn't really give you the detailed information explained, and you can go home and you can dissect it. There's no way in the world that you can go through this amount of money and a budget this large and comprehend and be able to ask adequate questions that need to be answered, asked with that much information being presented, not through this, that this document here. So it'd be nice if, you know, when you, when we do these type of presentations, that that kind of detailed information is given out, so it's easy for us to follow, and then it's easy for us to be able to ask the questions, because between the superintendent's information and then the visiting ministry, that's a lot of information.
Yeah, you better say something.
So the, the piece that I presented as far as the appropriations and everything like that, that pretty much ties in what was presented exactly to the. What I presented and what you see in front of you, the advertised budget, they mirror each other in what was projected on the screen there. If you're looking for a lower level or granular level of detail, I would suggest you make an appointment to come see me, and I can kind of walk you through the actual budget bill. The actual budget that spits out of the system is about four hundred pages. So I'm open to share that with you and answer any questions you have with regards to the line items that was submitted as part of the budget.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and by the way, we don't have to do that. It takes a lot of time and effort to do that presentation, and so we go out of our way to, to create that synthesis, that synopsis, so that it's easier for all of you. I think what I'm hearing you say is you want a copy of that at the board meeting, if not sent even earlier. Yeah, yeah, we, we always post the presentations after the board meetings. A lot of times, we're like scrambling until the last minute, because again, there's a lot of effort that goes into it, cleaning up charts, so on and so forth. But point taken, we'll, we'll bring copies, and we'll try to get it out to you guys sooner. And, 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 and as the questions continue to come up after this meeting, you know, you know how to get ahold of us.
All right, so this portion, this is for comments and questions by the board members, so we'll take each one's comments and questions, if you have any.
Can we do, because it's getting late, can we do three by threes and review this and then ask our questions?
Sure. So, I mean, but, but you still have an opportunity now if you want to make any comments or questions for the public. All right, so none from the board members? All right, so this is now the public's turn, so this is a hearing, so this is your opportunity to be heard on the budget. You can make comments, you can make objections, you can make suggestions, and you could ask questions, and you'll receive answers to your questions tonight or at a later date. So the first commenter to be heard is Kevin Barfield.
Good evening again. I think one of the first questions I wanted to ask was, according to the budget, is in reference to the legal reserves. And I see that we spent a lot of money on legal, on, I guess, legal representation. Can you explain a little bit how that works? Basically, how that fits into the budget? The other thing I wanted to ask too was, does the equity plan, does that tie into the budget too?
Yeah, so I, I could explain the legal budget. So we have, you know, as a district this size, which is common, we do have significant legal fees. We have labor council and solicitor council. We also have a lot of workers comp matters. So between workers compensation, labor and employment, and general solicitor, you know, there's litigation from various sources, so we have to budget for that.
And then I think the other question too I have in reference to the, when you say, superintendent, Payman, questions? When you mentioned the fact about the, like, one-time spending, or like, when you have reserves and you use it for like one-time spending on, is that money, is, is that carryover money that you're talking about, that you're referring to, when you're saying like, when you're using the term one-time spending to, to fund a particular project?
It comes from a number of different sources. So part of it is that our fund balance is going to end up being bigger than what we projected. Part of it is revenues that we would gain from, say, selling the central office building, which we've announced publicly by now. And part of it would also be some of the cost savings from our, the, sorry, I'm forgetting the technical term here, but we, we had a spending freeze, where we instituted some measures. So it's a number of different sources.
So, so even like, when you, when you said the position, when you was talking about donating, hiring for the support staff to do with the, the reading program that you wanted, the intervention program that you're talking about, using one-time funding? What happens after that year when you're trying to, how are you going to sustain that if you're using one-time funding or carryover funding for something as important as, you know, a reading intervention program? That I hope that would be used in your middle, in your high school?
The, the, it's a really good question, and one that we have been grappling with in terms of proposing this budget. If something is working, and we believe that the reading interventionist is a good idea, and one that will benefit our students and families, it's not going to fall off a fiscal cliff. And remember that we went from spending fifty-two million dollars in one-time money, now down to this budget, we're proposing fourteen million dollars. So you're right that we're walking into next year's budget short fourteen million dollars, but it's not to say that those fourteen million dollars were exclusively dedicated to a reading interventionist or the aux manner, so on and so forth, right? So like, the priorities will continue to be the priorities.
Okay. I think that's basically it for right now. I think the other concern, I guess, I'm just still confused over this per pupil spending. And it's like when you mentioned the fact about you're spending thirty thousand dollars on a special needs student, and it's amazing that if you're spending that kind of money, but you don't have the right staffing to even give them the basic service, you know, to a degree. I'm, I'm still trying to figure it out. And then you made a, you made a statement earlier, when you were saying, basically, when it's, when the student asked you about how is money, like, are we giving money to the Renaissance schools? And then you said, no, but then the reason, then you said that we're using, they're, they're using their per pupil spending to use some of that funding to, to, to build these Renaissance schools. So technically, we are giving them money. And for me, my, my, my opinion is the greatest scam that's going on right now in the state of New Jersey is this per pupil spending piece. Because you know, the governor doesn't even put it, doesn't even acknowledge or use the school's spending formula to even allocate how much money he's using for, for, for budgeting these schools. But at the same time, you got, just like was mentioned earlier, in the Renaissance bill, it stated that the Renaissance schools would get ninety-five percent of, of funding for per pupil spending. So we are indirectly using their public funding to help build and renovate these schools.
So the response I gave to Beatrice was that we did not pay for the construction of their facility. We did not give them the capital to build their building. The way, the way it works, and this is the best I can explain it, because I think it's a really, really important issue, and one that kind of cuts to the core of why Renaissance schools can serve our students with a, with an expediency and an efficiency that we just can't, is that the Renaissance schools, whether they're getting seventeen thousand dollars per pupil or twenty thousand dollars per pupil, it's less than what we are spending on our students. From that, they can finance. So in the same way you can get a mortgage based upon your salary, the Renaissance schools raise bonds based upon the revenue they get, and they can use the free markets to raise the debt, to do the construction, and then pay down their debt. We cannot do that. We are beholden to the SDA. Like, our, our recurring revenue is spoken for by them in terms of the bonds and other means, you know, they utilize to be able to bring capital to bear for places like Camden. So they're responsible for all the, what was formerly known as Abbott Districts. So they're going to deliver on Camden High, but the point here is that the SDA has not moved with the expediency that we would like for them to have over the last, however long, two-plus decades, right? So that's just an inherent challenge that you have within a bureaucracy. You have different procurement laws, you've got to challenge bureaucracy in the SDA. And it's unfortunate, it's reality, we are moving far faster today than we were since the money was pulled at Camden High back in two thousand and seven. But that's how Renaissance schools are able to finance buildings, because they have that flexibility and we don't.
Okay, and, and, and to close out, like I was saying, I, I believe that it helps if we are, as, you know, the community have a copy of the presentation, because again, it gives more in, in details in how the money is being spent, how it's being allocated. It gives you more visual, you know, of, you know, what you're doing, and it's easy to, you know, like I said, help, support, and even ask the right questions when it comes to having a, a proper dialogue when it comes to the budget.
Appreciate that, and we'll, we'll follow up on it.
All right, Sarah Jocelyn?
I have a couple of questions. I see that in this before and after school program and the summer school, you've substantially increased your expenditures here. Is this doing more of a wraparound? Is this part of your literacy focus? Trying to understand what's been changed here that would increase that? Or is it just, it's money that's being shifted around? I'm not sure. You're showing this, those two items are on, the pages aren't numbered, sorry. One point six million for the before and after school. One point six million for the before and after-school, and looks like summer school is, is one point one. And that's double what it was this year. So is that because you're projecting more students, or?
So what it is, Ms. Jocelyn, that's a very good question. What we've done is we've really looked at our summer school programming, not just last year, but analyzed its impact over the past few years, and what we're finding is that we need to be a little bit more strategic and also provide more opportunities for all of our schools, and not just some schools, and augment that with regard to before and after-school programming. And then with regard to summer school, we need to really make sure that we are targeting the needs that our students have, so that there is not that summer slide or summer regression. And so, in looking at our planning this year, we were very deliberate, deliberate in trying to offer quality programs that we hope to, to share. So, so the short of it is, I'm sorry if I'm rambling, the short of it is that we have looked at our programming for before and after-school and summer programming. We've taken a look at different staffing needs that we need to have to support, which increases the cost, and we've also taken a look at various programs that we'd like to bring in to reach a broader number of students. So increasing, as you mentioned in your question, the number of students also that we're able to service, so that we're making more of an impact with the funding.
So, for example, last year, you were targeting to get ten percent. I never saw a report on how many students actually were served in summer school, but it, it would seem from this that you're trying to serve significantly larger percentage.
Yes, we are. That's correct.
And I didn't see that the, the locations went up, but, you know, again, but you're trying to serve more, and then is this more before school or after school?
More after school.
More after school, okay. So that's, that's one aspect. And then I saw in the, if you go down to the educadia, edu, educational media service and library, I saw one and a half million dollar increase, and I was looking to understand that. Is, are you including the cost of transferring the library when Met East moves? Is under library expense, or is that somewhere else? I'm assuming you're going to move the library when they relocate to Hatch, and I don't know if you're making it available to everybody, but, anyway, but there's a one and a, almost a one and a half million dollars, well, not quite, but over one million dollars increase here. Is that, is that software? Is that your eBooks? Is it computers? Is it, is it library personnel? I would be delighted to hear.
So, the, the, I mean, the quick answer is it's a lot of different components there, including some staffing capacity to be able to better support our students in terms of getting them access to libraries and other resources, especially technology. So our team can jump in here as well, but it's not just like one thing that's driving that.
No, it's not, and it also includes the placement of the ops managers also, if I recall, but I can definitely drill into that and get back to you on exactly what's building that budget line.
The ops manager, your school coordinator, this, this broader grouping of the school coordinators being put under the educational media service library line, which is two-two-two XX, I don't know if that's a.
The, if I'm reading this, you're talking about the four point nine million?
Yeah, four point nine.
So it's up one point two million versus prior year?
Right. Versus the revised, versus the revised, yeah. So, but you're saying that there's the people that are the ops people?
I think what we should do is actually just like unpack it and share with you the line items, because I think right now, we're working based on the same document that you're looking at, and Regina can follow up and actually break it down for you by line item.
Right.
And she'll follow up separately.
Yeah, that's okay, that, we can follow up on this, but there was one more item that was in this, a range of things, and, here, it's down in, in the, in the textbook area. It was a three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar increase in textbooks. Is that your media? Is that your science, for example, the science textbooks that are eBooks, or?
I, I, I think it's a combination of, of, of different resources, not just science, so Katrina, feel free to jump in here.
Okay, no, I'm just, so, those kinds of things that are going in there, trying to have a better understanding.
Correct, yep.
Okay?
It's okay, and we can follow up offline.
Sean Brown? I wrote my questions out, I have about fifteen I wanted to go through, no, I'm just kidding. But seriously, in, in twenty thirteen, my last year on the board, Ms. Blackshear appointed Barbara Coscarella and I to the Board of School Estimate. This is the board where two board members, I don't know, somebody else and the mayor votes on the school budget, and under, under the takeover, that's no longer the process. The reason I bring it up is because when I'm, when Ms. Blackshear appointed me to the Board of School Estimate, and I was at City Hall to vote on the budget, Tanya recorded, I wrote a speech out, which shouldn't be a surprise, and Tanya recorded it, and then I uploaded it to YouTube, which, you know, and of course, it has like three views on it, because it wants to hear me talk on the Board of School estimate. But anyway, thanks, Ms. Blackshear, like no one else is laughing, thank you. Anyway, I watched it the other day, because I know it's budget season, and I was reminded, Ms. Atwood, that me and, like, several board members, we said, we're not voting yes for this budget unless we see something in there for a gifted and talented program. So Shafter, at the last minute, he put it in, and I remember like, being in the central office, like happily surprised to see that line item for, for, for the, for the gifted and talented program. Somewhere between that line item being included, Ms. Nicolosi taking over on June twenty-fifth of that year, and then Payman, then you taking over in September, I can't speak to what happened, but when Ms. At, but when Ms., when Ms. Atwood brought up the CHIPS program, the gifted and talented, tonight, I'm thinking that there is a promise that was made three years ago to have a pilot program that never materialized. We asked detailed questions about what happened to the original CHIPS program, you know, is it, is it being funded from the operating budget? Is it grant-funded? What is the true cost of it? At the time that I was in it, back in, what, nineteen ninety-one, it was at McGraw and Forest Hill, in, in those two elementary schools, you know, as, as, as I've told some of you, me going through the Camden enrollment process for my oldest son, who's about to go to kindergarten, asking about a gifted and talented program was, was one of my main questions for Yorkship and KIPP and the other schools that I talked to, because he's a, he's a gifted learner. I say all that to say that if we're going to take the request that Ms. Atwood made tonight, that, that I and other people have made over the years seriously, it needs to be reflected in the budget. Doesn't necessarily have to be, there are things that could be done, obviously, of, of, of making transfers in the future, but I think that, I think that would go a long way of bringing confidence to the community that's going to be done, and being that this is like my sixth time looking at a school budget, I think I know how to do that. I think if you look at some of the projections that have been made, you can make about a five percent decrease of what those projections are, and, and then, and, and then put those five percent decreases, which, which probably wouldn't have a tremendous impact on those specific things, into a pot of money specifically for a pilot program at, a pilot gifted and talented program for, for the next academic year. So which, and, so what would that mean? That would mean the money is there, it would also mean that a team would have to be put together during the summer, and it, it actually could, could also mean that you're doing nothing but in the planning phase for this, this, this upcoming school year, and then by the, or twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, you have a, a program that's been planned, that's been budgeted, that students have been recruited for, and that are in there. So I say all that to say, there's a lot, obviously, in this budget, but if we're going to take gifted and talented, and talent seriously, I think there's places that we can find money for it and do it to fulfill a promise that's been made over the years.
All right, that was the last commenter.
Yeah, so just to quickly respond to that, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the budget is still fluid, and new ideas, new initiatives can come up, and even though there's not a line item that says gifted and talented, doesn't mean we can't do it. Frankly, I think gifted and talented is more a policy decision for us. Clearly, there are some funding implications, and to the extent we all agree upon moving forward, we can, pretty confident, and I say this without having consulted my, my team, but I think we could manage through financially, I think it's more a policy decision, do we want to separate our kids by ability, and do we want to build a program in one school only? That sort of thing. I think those are bigger policy questions that I think are pretty complicated, and while I, on the merits, can understand the argument for a gifted and talented program, I think it's, it's worth discussing further, because it's, it's complicated. So that concludes public commentary. Additional, yep. Sure, all right, just looking at the other board members for comments. All right, I hereby approve tonight's two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget.
At this time, I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I get a second? Motion to adjourn meeting was made by Mrs. Atwood and Mrs. Darkley Burley. All in favor of adjourning the meeting say yes. All opposed say no. The meeting is now adjourned.